Aye, aye, aye. Oh. Um. Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All.
Please note that all our councilors are here except councillor, uh, no.
Welcome to you.
Okay. So please note that all our councilors are here except councillor Marshall Neely, who is not feeling well this evening. So please let's send her some really, really good thoughts. Um, there's a presentation for Jake Brake. Adopt a Spot Program.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to talk about the Adopt a Spot Program, which is a town program sponsored by the Department of Public Works and the Beautiful Cation Committee. Excuse me. I think, where is that? Okay. Adopt a Spot, Bloomfield, is an effort to encourage individuals and groups or businesses to participate in maintaining or beautifying our town's public spaces by landscaping and donating plants or shrubs or weeding and making sure a public garden is free of litter. If you have ever noticed a site in town that needs some attention, and we ask you to adopt it and see how rewarding it is. In order to do that, you just have to reach out to the Department of Public Works or go to our town website and you'll see how you can reach out to the Beautification Committee. So why am I here tonight? I'm here tonight because I am here to honor one of our local businesses in Bloomfield who has stepped up to the plate and has adopted the Blue Hills Fire Station on Blue Hills Avenue. So who is that? That is Jacob Vehicle Systems. The Jacobs Engine Brake has been on the market since 1961 and it's better known as Jake Brake. And that's how I'm going to talk about them tonight. The company produces light duty, medium duty, and heavy duty engine brakes, recreation vehicle exhaust brakes, aftermarket parts and tune-up kits to heavy duty diesel engine manufacturers in the United States, Asia, and Europe. The company was incorporated in 1990, but they've been here since 1986. And we are proud to say they are based in our town, Bloomfield. So how did this come about? The BBC met with Jake Brake about four months ago and we talked about a design plan. And we worked out something that included plants that were related to items of fire, such as hydrangeal little quickfire, hookah fire chiefs, biuria gold flame, and sedum autumn fire amongst some of them. They not only made a financial donation towards the project, but they volunteered to install the plant materials and maintain the site until 2019. Well, through 2019 and then we're hoping every year after that. So this is the site of the Blue Hills Fire Department. And on October 13th, on a very rainy day, surprise, nine people from Jake Brake employees, including their president, Dennis Gallagher, who is here tonight, came to the Blue Hills Fire Department in the rain to participate in our Adopt a Spot Program. They planted, they mulched, they got wet, but enthusiasm was high. Joining them next was also... This is the group. This is our town. Lieutenant Vincent Laney, Deputy Mayor Rickford Curtin, myself, Councilman David Mann, and Commissioner Jackie Macy-Green. They came to oversee the project. Nope, I'll go. Next. And also Hunter, this gentleman who came to volunteer. We had also young people there to assist. Next. So we got plants, beautiful plants, that were donated from local nurseries, including Monrovia Nurseries in Granby, Site One in Windsor, Lowe's in Bloomfield, and also through a donation, as I said before, from Jacobs Vehicle Systems. So we got there that day. We laid out the plants. You can see they're all labeled, beautiful. Next. This is just a few of them. And here we got, this is our president. This is Dennis Gallagher. And he was wonderful. And he was there on his knees planting the plants and having a great time. Okay, next. And I want you to notice, they all had different techniques of how they planted. Next. Next. And here we have Councilman David Mann up on the top of the truck. Not bad for a 77-year-old man. Wow. Putting the mulch down into the barrels. Okay. I know. I love it. And there is the finished product. These daylilies were donated by one of our committee on the Bloomfield Beautification Committee. And all the rest of the other plants were donated. Okay, next. And here you see what putting the mulch on afterwards made it a beautiful display. And every year these will get bigger and bigger. And just to show you, just little things. Hookah fire chiefs, biuria gold flame, sedum autumn fire. You know, the crew there at the Fire Department will have fun trying to identify these. And I want to tell you, the crew themselves from the Fire Department, I went out, we planted bulbs because Jacob Brake also donated money for us to plant bulbs. And they were concerned that the plants had died because the leaves had fallen off. And I said, "No, they're okay." But they, after we left, went around, fixed the drains because that day when we were there, the downspouts were leaking. And they put mulch around the rest of the garden. And they even put an edging around the gardens that we did. So it was definitely community helping community. Okay, next. And this one, I guess they left this in. She was really head over heels with this. Okay, next. And here's the crew after it was all over. Everyone was inspired. They may have been wet, but it was really a lot of fun. And we really felt like something had been accomplished. Okay, next. And so this will be placed in the garden coming in the spring. So all Adopt a Spots have signs so they let you know who was taking care of that spot. And we are very grateful and indebted to Jacob Vehicle Systems. And I have to tell you, I just found out tonight, they not only have adopted this spot, but for over 12 years, they've given baskets, turkey baskets for Thanksgiving, filled with all sorts of goodies. And they're very generous in giving back to our community. So at this time, I would like to present to the President of Jacob Brake, Dennis Gallagher, and Judy Stickles, who's Executive Assistant, who helped me in organizing this project with myself and the BBC. Our appreciation and our gratitude for beautifying this spot. If you would come up, I'd like to present you with this certificate.
I usually don't need a microphone, but I'll try it. Good evening. Deputy Mayor did a little bit more than just supervise. He actually did get his hands dirty. Not as dirty as David Mann, by the way, but he did get himself dirty. Again, thank you for the opportunity. And just a little bit more about Jacob, if you don't mind. Company was founded in 1961. Sorry to say, we originally started in West Hartford. Apologize for that. But we've been in Bloomfield since 1986 over 22 East Dudley Town Road. We have 500 outstanding employees at that facility. For me, it's great. I've been in manufacturing my entire life, worked for five different companies. And it's really, really good to be hiring at such a robust pace in the United States and more importantly, in Connecticut. I apologize for the red hot hot follows Yankee fans. I'm originally from Boston. You know, if asked to explain, why did we pick this Adopt a Spot? Last year, in 2017, our parent company at the time started initiative what they called "The Day of Caring." So our Employee Service Committee reached out to Mr. Dan Carter from the Public Works Department. And we found a park to clean up. So we had over 20 Jacobs employees participating in cleaning up a local park in Bloomfield. This year, we looked for something else. The Employee Service Committee reached out again. And the Adopt a Spot Program was available. And we have relied heavily on the Bloomfield Fire Department. Thank you very much over the last few years. About five years ago, they did a training for our team on fire safety. And over the last couple of years, they've been called for a couple of false alarms in our building. They've been extremely responsive, beyond professional. So it felt really good to give something back to them. And for me personally, I buy that every day because I live in Bloomfield. And I too thought the plants were dead. So thank you for, you know. And we look forward to maintaining this site and continuing to develop and be a good corporate citizen in the great town of Bloomfield. Thank you.
So thank you very much to Jacobs. We appreciate it. Thank you very much to the Chairperson for our Beautification Committee. I didn't know she was such a comedian. We probably need you to do like a two-minute every meeting. At this time, is Ms. Nancy Bowden in the audience?
Yes, she is.
She is Nancy. How are you? So if you can meet me over there by the podium, that would be great. And I'm going to ask councillor McClary to come. So we have some amazing people here in the town of Bloomfield. And I think it was a couple of years ago, Bloomfield was designated as a welcoming town. And it's great to see that we have residents that buy into the fact that we're a welcoming town. And there are so many residents that have done some amazing things with people that have been displaced during the hurricanes and refugees and things like that, that you will hear more about. But this evening, we're going to honor one of our heroes of our welcoming town, Ms. Nancy Bowden. On behalf of, and just as a caveat, Nancy, councillor McClary did nominate you for this citation. So I just wanted to put that out there. "On behalf of the Town Council and the entire town of Bloomfield, thank you for sharing in the values of Bloomfield being a welcoming community. You have opened your arms to others to better their lives. You have embraced the town's value that everyone is welcome here and that we are here to help. And for that, we express our sincere appreciation. Dated at Bloomfield, Connecticut, this 13th day of November, Suzanne DeBeetham-Brown, Mayor, and the entire Town Council."
So very quickly, I can't take the credit for this. So a councilwoman in Hartford, Councilwoman Wilderlyse Bermudez, reached out to me because she wanted to recognize you for taking in a family from Puerto Rico from the previous hurricane. So she opened up her home to this family and supported this family, their transition from Puerto Rico to America. And she showed the Bloomfield values. And for that, that's why she's here today. She was out of town when they were going to recognize her. So she reached out to me to see if we can do this tonight. And I said, "Absolutely." So congratulations and thank the Mayor for recognizing you.
I would just like people to realize that the families who came to Connecticut and to Hartford in particular, many of them are still struggling to find permanent housing that they can afford. And in fact, the family that lived with me for three months, a single mother and two teenage daughters, is still struggling to find adequate employment for the mother and stable housing. It doesn't take much to knock them off their path and have them, like, once again, looking for another apartment. They went from my home to a church in Hartford that offered transition housing also and are currently in an apartment, but are struggling again to make ends meet. So I just want people to be aware that the struggle continues for many of those people. And they're here because of climate change. So we need to pay attention to that, too. Thank you.
So we have, actually have Eva Bermudez-Zimmerman here to present you with the trophy or, on behalf of her sister. So take it away.
So it's been a tumultuous year for the Puerto Rican people and hurricane survivors. And without the help of amazing people like Nancy and volunteers that, from the grace of their own hearts, decided to help out, get supplies, house, literally just the t-shirt on their own backs and just give it away. It wouldn't have been such a successful, I guess, resurrection of a people. And this issue is near and dear. I myself had cousins who lost everything, literally everything, with young ones. And my family was fortunate enough to have the support, financial support, to help them start again. But there are so many people that came here to Connecticut that didn't have that benefit, that didn't have someone on their side, a cousin or a parent or the financial means to start literally from scratch. But because of people like Nancy, they found hope. So I present this award with so much love and enthusiasm for finding people like Nancy who know how to give hope back to a society. So thank you.
And thank you so much. Thank you.
At this time, we will have a presentation by the MDC. Joe's like, forgive me. Go ahead, Joe. Go ahead, Joe. Go on. They're not done yet. All right, Joe. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us to here tonight. Couple tough acts to follow. Plantings and an award for very good reasons. I'm here to talk about sanitary sewers. And what happens when sanitary sewers mixes with stormwater? And how the MDC is addressing it. So my name is Joe LaLiberty. I'm with CDM Smith, Consultant Engineer for the Hartford MDC on the Clean Water Project. Following me will be John Zinzarella, who will provide an update on the budget update for the MDC as well. So I'm here to give a presentation on the MDC's proposed integrated plan, which will be submitting to DEEP at the end of the year. Up front in the presentation, I provided a number of acronyms that you'll see possibly throughout the presentations or sometimes I use them as I'm talking. They're very common in my field. I understand when people aren't in the field of sewers, it's not common to them. So if there's ever something that I throw out there, such as CSOs, you can always go here and look up and say, "Oh, it's a combined sewer overflow." That still might not be enough. So why am I here? I'm here to explain integrated planning and what that process is. And I have a slide on each of these. I'm going to give a quick summary on the MDC's Clean Water Project, the evolution, the accomplishments to date. And then I'm going to talk about the plan that we're proposing to DEEP for moving forward, which is an integrated plan. And what the high points of that plan are and how the baseline assumption is to do sewer rehabilitation. Talk about the financial benefits of the plan and then talk about next steps. Most importantly, the MDC is looking for your support with this program as we go to submit it to DEEP. So what is integrated planning? Integrated planning is something the EPA came out with back in 2012. Basically municipalities who were wrestling with addressing combined sewer overflows, which is when one sanitary, one pipe in the street takes both the sanitary flow from the house, the toilets, the showers and whatnot, and combines with that the stormwater from the catch basins. What happens is when it rains, that overflow goes out to receiving water bodies. And that's what we're looking to address. Well, prior to 2012, when municipalities like the MDC were looking to address this problem with state agencies and with the EPA, they had to address it in a vacuum, so in a silo. They were only looking at what projects did you need to do in order to address those combined sewer overflows. All the while, there were other regulatory initiatives that were going on for sanitary sewer overflows or ongoing maintenance that's required for the sanitary sewer system or upkeep and then also the wastewater treatment plant. Well, in 2012, the EPA came out with guidance that said, "We now will allow you to consider all of your initiatives that you need to do under one umbrella called integrated planning, that could then set the stage of what you'll do next over the next several decades, years or decades, that is prioritized based on a ranking system." So that's what we're here tonight is to talk about this move from just addressing strictly just the sanitary, the combined sewer overflows to what we're calling an integrated plan. So if there's one thing you take away from today, it would be this slide. This is what I'm looking to present to you as we go through the remainder of the slides. It's the benefits of why we are looking to go towards integrated planning. From an MDC standpoint, it's better. It's prioritizing existing infrastructure repairs in all eight member towns. Not just Hartford, not just the communities that go to Hartford, but all of the member towns. And you'll see in a little bit about Bloomfield. It's also looking for more time. In the last 10 years, the MDC has already spent or committed $1.7 billion to address the combined sewer overflow problem in Hartford. And the intent is, with the current plans, that they would have to continue spending through 2029, another billion dollars or thereabouts, in order to address the problem. What they're looking for is a longer period of time to stretch out what needs to be done and prioritize that on the infrastructure repair. From the member town and the public standpoint, we're going to address your sewers sooner. You'll see some slides that talk about how the sewers are failing at an alarming rate. It's because the sewer system dates back to the 1800s, you know, in some cases as far back as 1850s. And now it's reached the end of its useful life and it's falling apart. The prior combined sewer overflow program did nothing to address this failing aging infrastructure. And now we're looking to address the sewers in each of the eight towns sooner. It also provides a more stable avalarm increase as opposed to what you've seen recently where there are large increases and they seem to be higher from year to year and they're basically oscillating up and down. And will show that you, that what we're proposing actually reduces what the burden would be towards avalarm and it stabilizes it. All the while, we will meet all of the objectives of the Clean Water Project, which is to address the DEEP's requirements for combined sewer overflows, the EPA's requirements for addressing sanitary sewer overflows and reduce nitrogen to the Connecticut River. So summary of where we are today. The Clean Water Project encompasses the consent order from the state for the CSOs, the consent decree from the EPA for the SSOs. And the project goals are to reduce the combined sewer overflows to receiving streams and waters, to eliminate the combined sewer overflows to the Weathersfield Cove in the north branch of the Park River, to reduce the nitrogen discharge to the Connecticut River and to address the sanitary sewer overflows that occur outside of Hartford. So why we are here is the original long-term control plan that was submitted to DEEP in 2005 laid out the base map for what they were doing, what they've done to date. That plan is required to be updated every five years. So in 2012, we submitted an update to the plan. And now the next update is due in 2018. So we're in the process of finalizing this document, which will be available in a couple of weeks for the public to view, and submitting it to the DEEP by the end of the year. So some highlights of what has been accomplished to date and what was in the 2014 plan. We were to continue sewer rehabilitation in the towns around Hartford. We've done a significant amount of sewer renewal in West Hartford, Newington, some in Bloomfield. And you'll see slides on that. And we were to complete the sewer separation in areas in Hartford that are shown in green on the map here. There's areas in South Hartford up to North Hartford where we had done some prior sewer separation. Basically building a new drain next to the existing sewer so that we take the stormwater out of the sewer system so that there's two dedicated pipes, one for each. We were to complete the wastewater treatment plant upgrades at the Hartford plant in southeast Hartford. Those upgrades were roughly $500 million to repair the aging infrastructure and to increase the capacity of the plant to take more of the flow that's coming from the surrounding towns and Hartford. And we were to complete the south tunnel project, which is currently under construction. The south tunnel project runs from southeast Hartford, right next to the wastewater treatment plant, and runs west to West Hartford and picks up combined sewer overflows and sanitary sewer overflows along the way, which will eliminate the combined sewer overflows to Weathersfield Cove. What was remaining was central and north Hartford. That's the work that was remaining in the prior plan. And that's what we were looking to reevaluate with this current long-term control plan update. So what about progress to date? Before we started the Clean Water Project in 2004, there was 1 billion gallons of combined sewer overflows that were being discharged in an average year to the receiving water bodies. The consent order with DEEP requires us to take that down to zero for a typical year. So to date, with the work we've done to date, we've reduced that overflow by about half, down to 524 million gallons a day through all the work of the sewer rehabilitation, the separation that I talked about and the Hartford wastewater treatment plant upgrades. It'll be reduced by another 60 million gallons once, in a typical year, once the South Hartford Tunnel is put online. And what's remaining is the 464 million gallons, which is what we're developing this plan to address the remaining overflows that are in central and north Hartford. An important note is the bullet on the bottom here, which is part of why we're doing this project. Long Island Sound and Save the Sound released a report recently that talked about not only are the local receiving water bodies throughout Hartford and the region and the Connecticut River being improved, but Long Island Sound has been dramatically improved since the start of, not just the MDC, but a lot of other communities doing work to reduce CSOs and to reduce nitrogen. So the benefit of the money that's being spent is being seen in the reduction in CSOs and it's been seen in the receiving water bodies. So I've talked a lot about combined sewer overflows, but how are they different from a sanitary sewer overflow? So in Bloomfield, you have one pipe that has sanitary sewers in it that the MDC owns and maintains. Then you have a second pipe that's for stormwater. and maintains, and then you have a second pipe that's for stormwater. So in your town, you actually have what's called a separated sewer system. So on a dry day, there's no difference between what happens with a combined system and a separated system. But on a wet day, in Hartford, the catch basins are connected to the sewer system so they have more flow from that. But it's not just catch basins that are bringing flow into the system. There's also leaky sewer mains, manholes, and this private inflow connections such as sump pumps, foundation drains, and roof leaders. So in fact, if you looked at excluding Hartford and you just looked at all of the towns around Hartford that flow into Hartford and you add up the sum during a peak wet day, from the separated sanitary sewer systems, the flow on a peak wet day from all the towns, including Bloomfield, exceeds the capacity of the Hartford wastewater treatment plant. So even if we didn't have a Hartford system, the Hartford treatment plant would not be enough to treat the amount of flow that's coming from all of the towns. So in the case of Bloomfield, you see what's shown here is on a dry day, your flow to Hartford is 2 million gallons a day. That's for the sanitary sewers. When it rains during a peak rain event, that flow spikes all the way up to 18 million gallons a day, meaning that 16 million gallons a day of clear stormwater infiltration and sump pumps and whatnot from Bloomfield is getting into the system that then gets conveyed to Hartford. So what has been done in Bloomfield to date? We've rehabilitated about 6% of the sewer system since 2005, basically taking the old system and putting a new pipe within that pipe to extend the life of that existing system. And then there's other projects that have been recently completed or projects underway. They're shown in the red circle is the Beaman Brook Sewer Replacement. The purple circle is the Packard Street and Daniel Boulevard. On the map, where you see the sewers that are highlighted, that's the 6% of the sewers that have been rehabilitated to date. And then there's also been a number of emergency sewer repairs, High Hill, Mills, Brown, Tunxus, Maple, Tyler, Jerome, that have been done over the last five years. Those are the type of emergency sewer repairs and failures that we're looking to proactively fix with this new integrated plan. So why integrated planning? Yet another slide on failing infrastructure, but I'm trying to drive the point home. So we have in 2017, there was 17 emergency repairs that cost $3.5 million. In 2018, there'll be a much higher number of emergency repairs and the total will probably be more than double of the costs in order to do those emergency repairs. When these sewers fail, they are completely collapsing in some cases. So in the case of Capen Street in Hartford, for instance, you see where the entire road collapsed. There's a couple, there's an example here in Bloomfield on Maple Avenue where there was emergency repair that we did back in July of 2016. These repairs are happening on an alarming rate. And not only are there sewers that have repaired, this is a separate slide that shows similar results. These are sewers that haven't been repaired yet, that we televised inspected the sewer system as part of the consent decree and that television inspection has showed us that your sewer system is in a very, very rough condition and is in need of repair. So all of these sewers are examples of sewers that need repair through the integrated plan. A couple of examples of ones that are provided are Greenwood Avenue in Bloomfield and Wall Street in Bloomfield. In the past, these sewer repairs were done on avalarm through the MDC Sewer CIP. It's separate from what is being done for the Clean Water Project. And in total, in all of the member towns for the district, we've identified $450 million worth of repairs. So switching over to the two primary alternatives for our long-term control plan update, we have Scenario 1, which is status quo, which is an all-tunnel system in Hartford versus Scenario 2, which is our proposed integrated plan. So if we were to continue with the current plan in Hartford, we would be building a tunnel system starting immediately and being completed by 2029 or somewhere thereabouts just thereafter. It would be an all-tunnel plan that would continue to ignore the failing sewer infrastructure plan, the failing sewer infrastructure. Scenario 2 is what we're proposing, which has less tunnel. The only tunnel that would be required is the downtown tunnel. It has additional sewer rehabilitation in north Hartford as opposed to bringing a tunnel up there. It includes putting that $450 million worth of sewer repair as part of this program to reduce the flow that's getting into the sewer system and address CSOs while addressing the aging infrastructure. So two different programs. So how do they stack up against each other related to costs and other things? The all-tunnel plan is slightly cheaper, but that should be as expected. That's why we recommended it back in 2012 because if I just looked at combined sewer overflows in a silo, I would build a tunnel system out there to collect them all and I would continue to completely ignore the existing failing system. But the separation plan is a little bit more expensive in the north, but it addresses that failing infrastructure. The second major point is the tunnel system is one project that would need to be built over the next 14 years as opposed to the separation and sewer rehabilitation plan is a number of smaller projects, mostly all under $20 million, so it's manageable, that would be spent over 40 years. And obviously, the sewer renewal one will significantly reduce the age of the sewer system compared to just building a tunnel system. So two completely different plans. So what is proposed in Bloomfield under this proposed integrated plan? An additional 35% of the sewer system would be rehabilitated throughout the town for a total of 41%, which is all the red sewers in Bloomfield. These would be rehabilitated as part of Scenario 2 through the integrated planning process. Similar work could be done in all of the eight member towns. It reduces the average sewer age in the town from 67 years old, if we continue to do nothing, down to 45 years old. The way we calculate that is you look at the age in which the sewer was built and you average it across all of the sewers in the town. So based on today's age, it'd be 67 years old, but if we rehabilitate 41% of the sewers in the town, that age would drop down to 45 years, which is extending the life and reducing the age of the sewer system. We also would have a drainage swale that's located near Maple Edge Drive that is currently getting into the sewer system. We would be looking to remove that from the sewer system. That's a project that would have to be coordinated with the town to make sure that there's a proper place for that swale to go so it doesn't go into the sewer. So financial benefits. How do MDC customers pay for sewers? They pay for it in two ways. One way is the Clean Water Project charge, which is on the water bill based on water consumption. And I'll show an example water bill in the next slide. The second way that a resident pays for sewers is through their tax bill through the avalarm system from the MDC submits an avalarm payment to the town. The town pays the MDC and then the town spreads that out across all of the residents and the businesses. So what we are looking to do as part of the EPA's affordability analysis is to combine those two to see what a resident actually pays in total for sewer service in each of the towns. This is an example water bill to a resident and shows you where the Clean Water Project charge shows up on the water bill, which is where the green arrow is under the federal and state regulatory compliance fees. The 2018 Clean Water Project charge was $3.80 per 100 cubic feet and that rate will go to $4.10 in 2019, as you'll see in a future slide. So this is what an average bill would be in 2019 for a resident in Bloomfield. We used the $4.10 per 100 cubic feet that I just mentioned as the rate. We then looked at the average water consumption for Bloomfield residents, which was 6100 cubic feet per year, which is around 50,000 to 55,000 gallons a year. And that basically equates out to about $249 for the average resident that they pay on their water bill towards the Clean Water Project. On the avalarm, we took the total amount that the MDC submits to the town of Bloomfield. We then looked at what the residential portion of that avalarm bill was, which was 2.8 million. And then we looked at the total dwellings from census data in Bloomfield, 8,800 buildings, and came up with the average resident that they pay on their tax bill for the avalarm system, which is $319. So the total for a resident in Bloomfield on average for the sewer system is $568. So why integrated planning? This graph here shows you what we've spent on a given year since 2007, when the program started through 17. As you can see in 2007 before we started, we weren't spending a lot and then as we went forward, we started spending hundreds of millions of dollars, all the way up to 2017, where we spent over $250 million. The MDC here is the public and here's the town councils when they say we're doing too much. So what we're trying to do is to look at reducing that amount of spending that's being done on an annual basis and spread it out over time. That's the primary goal that we're looking to do with this integrated plan with approval from DEEP. So this slide provides Scenario 1, as I mentioned. Scenario 1 is status quo, all tunnel, no sewer rehabilitation, no sewer separation in Hartford versus Scenario 2, which is a reduced tunnel where it's just building the downtown tunnel. We're actually proposing to delay the building of that downtown tunnel by 20 years until the debt on the south tunnel comes off, do the separation project in north Hartford, and include the comprehensive sewer rehab throughout all the towns, including Bloomfield. So on the far left of these graphs is 2019 is the average sewer bill that I walked through how that $568 is computed. As you go through each set of two bars, they're in five-year increments and it shows the difference of the two bars between if you went with Scenario 1 versus Scenario 2. So overall, you can see that as you move through time, Scenario 2 is actually less expensive to residents of Bloomfield than Scenario 1. You also can see the green bars are for avalarm. The blue bars were for the Clean Water Project charge. So as you compare Scenario 1 versus Scenario 2, you can see that Scenario 1 includes substantial avalarm increases, whereas Scenario 2 has a less avalarm increase as you go through time. So the two are achieving two things for Bloomfield. The residents are paying less overall and the avalarm is less. And they also are two completely different programs where one is rehabilitating the sewer system, whereas the other one is ignoring it. So as an example of how the avalarm is being stabilized, this is a presentation from John Zenzarella recently comparing the two scenarios just related to avalarm. In this case, Scenario 2, the proposed plan is on the top highlighted in yellow, and Scenario 1, the current plan, the all-tunnel plan, is on the bottom. If you just look at the yellow highlighted slide, you'll see in Scenario 1, the projected avalarm increases range from 15% down to 2% down to 11% if we stayed with the all-tunnel plan, Scenario 1, versus Scenario 2 where we start to shift the burden. We are addressing the aging sewer infrastructure, but we're doing it on the Clean Water Project. You see that the avalarm increases are reduced and they're stabilized, so they're within, say, 1% to 3% to 4% on an average year. So next steps, we have, this entire plan has been developed through a series of meetings with the EP. There were 17 meetings throughout 2018 that they were involved in us identifying the projects, ranking the projects, and developing the plan. We then proposed this plan, we then presented this plan to the MDC Bureau of Public Works in two different workshops and then subsequently, it was presented to the MDC Full District Board on October 1st and was approved for bringing it to all of the town councils. So now where I am is going through all the town councils and obviously you see tonight, November 13th, and we're headed to Rocky Hill next week and then Hartford I know here is the following week after that. On here, there was an additional meeting that was added for member town DPW and engineering briefing. What we heard back after the first, say, four town councils is that this is a lot and that we're trying, you're asking me to do it in 20 minutes, but you know, it's something that my company and the MDC has been working on for two years. And so what we did is we had at the Training Center for the MDC, we brought in, all the DPWs and engineers were invited, Jonathan was there, and we went over in detail and answered a whole number of questions. We were there for, I believe, almost three hours to go through this program in more detail. So if you have any detailed questions beyond tonight, you know, you're more than welcome to ask Mr. Thieson or you can certainly contact me. Public hearing for this is scheduled for December 17th. That will also be at the MDC, December 11th, sorry, that'll also be at the MDC's Training Center. So the next steps, the MDC is asking for your support, they're asking for resolution and support of this integrated plan to be incorporated with our documents that we'll be submitting to DEEP at the end of the year to show your support in that, in this plan. We've had a significant public outreach and hearing process. I already talked about the presentation to the town DPW and engineering staff. The reports will be available on November 26th. We will have a copy at the town hall right here. We'll have a copy at every town hall. There'll be also one at the MDC. It'll also be available on the MDC's website. All comments that you have on the plan, whether it's public, town council, or whoever, is due by December 13th. We will then review and respond to all comments, finalize the report, and submit it to DEEP by the end of the year. And I provided John Myrtle's email address if you have any questions, comments, or letters of support. So at this point, I don't know if you want to ask me questions on this or if you want John to go right into the budget update from the MDC.
I'll just go to the budget and then we'll just ask questions on both.
Okay.
John, I can't give you a presentation. Good evening. All right, I'm going to try to go through the highlights. This is some information here. This is an excerpt from a presentation that was given at the MDC Board of Finance Budget Workshop on Friday. That entire presentation from Friday is up on the MDC website under the banner under Proposed Budget, as well as all the resolutions that are going to be coming forth at the upcoming meetings are up there as well, in addition to the whole 2019 Proposed Operating Budget Book as well as Capital Improvement Program Book. So they're all available on the website for your review. On this slide here, just quickly, just want to show the 2019 Proposed Budget Meeting Schedule. As you can see, this week ago, Wednesday, a district board meeting where the budget was referred to the Board of Finance. This past Friday, as I mentioned, we had our Board of Finance Special Meeting Workshop where the commissioners reviewed the presentation, had time to ask questions about what was in the book. Next Monday, at the MDC offices at 5:00 is a Board of Finance public hearing, followed by the Board of Finance meeting at 5:30 where members of the Board of Finance will have an opportunity to review the budget, make modifications, ask questions, and so forth. At that meeting on Monday, there will be resolutions for them to refer the budget back to the district board for consideration. On Wednesday, November 28th, there's a Water Bureau public hearing at 5:00 PM at the MDC headquarters, followed by a Water Bureau meeting at 5:30. That public hearing is to, for the public to make comments with regards to the water rates as well as, and then at the public, the Water Bureau meeting, they will take action on the resolutions for the water rates, referring them back to the district board. On Monday, December 10th, at 4:45, there's a governmental hearing. That's a public hearing on the sewer ordinances that are proposed. And once again, those ordinances, proposed ordinances are on the website for your review. And followed at 5:00 with the MDC government hearing where they will vote upon those resolutions and refer it back to the full district board. And on Monday, December 10th, at 5:30 is a district board meeting where they will consider the 2019 Proposed Budget and all the water and sewer ordinance resolutions. Okay, got a little trigger happy here. All right, so just going through some of the key drivers and variables in the 2019 Proposed Budget. Metropolitan District has 400 in the 2019 Proposed Budget, 490 heads between operating budget and CIP budget. Approximately 20% of those are exempt and excluded and the balance are under, are subject to collective bargaining unit agreements. Our current collective bargaining agreement expires at the end of December 31st, 2018. However, we with the union proactively negotiated a new contract which goes through December 31st, 2022. And some of the large drivers, as payroll and payroll related approximately is about 40% of our operating expenses. We bargained to increase the pension contribution to 7.5% of regular compensation up from 5%. We have eliminated spousal or dependent medical dental coverage, medical dental coverage upon retirement, termination of the medical care B premium reimbursement, and all new employees hired after June of 2018 will be enrolled in a health savings account and a high deductible health plan with a 16% premium share and those premium shares will increase in '20 and '21 and remain flat through '22. In addition, the OPEB contribution of 1% for all new employees and all collective bargaining unit employees after December 31st, 2018. Clearly, one of the items that was bargained for was to control and get a handle on the long-term liabilities for pension as well as OPEB. As of 12/31/17, the district's defined benefit pension plan is funded at 85%, so it's a healthy plan. However, we have a substantial OPEB liability that needs to be, start to be funded. In exchange for these bargaining items, the COLIS for 2019 is 3% and it's 3% for 2021 and 2.5% for '22. As I mentioned, employee benefits. Right now, the MDC's OPEB is not funded. It's on a pay-as-you-go basis and there's a liability that's in excess of 300 million that needs to be addressed. So one of the items that was requested from members of the board and the Personnel Pension Insurance Committee was to come into a step-up plan for funding OPEB. So with our actuary, we came up with a 10-year step into the actually determined contribution and the first stop on this is 9.146 million. How does that compare to 2018? It was 5 million. How does that compare to OPEB expenses in a given year? 2017 actual OPEB expenses were 6.6 million, so we have a deficit in the OPEB trust fund. So this is the first step in one of the key budget assumptions to addressing OPEB and one of the long-term liabilities. Medical benefits in addition. 2019 contributions, 15.3 million. That's a contribution into the MDC's Internal Service Fund and that's on a pay-as-you-go basis. The MDC and its current medical programs, we're self-insured. We pay an administrative rate with Anthem, but all claims are on the MDC. We do have individual stop losses to protect us for high claims, but we are an aging workforce and the actual estimate for 2019 medical claims that the MDC will receive is 15.3 million. That's a significant increase over prior years. We were hoping that the actual assumptions for the last two years were a little high and out of whack, but it's holding true, so we have to fund up to that level as the Internal Service Fund has a significant deficit from underfunding from the past two years. Another key assumption that's driving the increase in 2009's Proposed Budget relative to 2018's adopted is debt service. As Joe Leverti was showing, the sewer and water operations, very capital-intensive business and the sewer operations, the MDC has in excess of $1.7 billion in infrastructure assets on the sewer side and we have in excess of $700 million worth of infrastructure assets on the water utility. So as Joe has pointed out, it's an aging infrastructure. On the avalarm side, which we're talking about here, is the plan is that we've been spending $35 million a year on sewer, capital improvement projects, 25 million each year on water, and 15 million on combined projects. Combined means 49% of it hits the sewer, 51% hits the water. So given this... So given this level of capital expenditures, about $75 million a year, we're on a biannual bonding cycle. So in 2018, we had $120 million ban that was maturing on August 1st. So we went out in the market, and we sold general obligation bonds to take out the $120 million ban. The debt service associated with that geo-bond sale is $10.5 million, split between the water and sewer businesses. The tick was 3.31%. As part of the process, as you're aware, as Bloomfield is, we also have seven other member towns, of which Hartford is one of them, so Hartford bankruptcy crisis and, and issues presented some challenges in the prior years, we were able to get back to a stable outlook with this sale, and we were able to achieve a tick of about 3.31% on this, which is considerable savings compared to the last geo-issue in December of '16 amidst the Hartford bankruptcy. In addition, some of this capital improvements are funded by the Drinking Water and Clean Water Fund, the State Revolving Fund. We have two IFOs that are being converted to project loan obligations, and that are contributing $2 million with the debt service as well. General insurance, property values at the Hartford and Water, Rocky Hill Water Pollution Control Facilities are forecasted to increase by $75,000. Why? As the Clean Water Project that Joe LaVerdi was talking about, we have the headworks at the Hartford Water Pollution Control Facility, as well as the wet weather expansion in both the Hartford Facility and Rocky Hill are coming online in accordance with the milestones under the consent order, consent decree. That's about a half a billion dollars' worth of assets that are coming out of CIP onto the books, so the premiums associated are coming off of builder's risk, which is a capital charge into our insurance, our property insurance premiums. In addition, the self-insured retention and claims contribution, we're increasing $475,000 up to $3 million. That's also a contribution to the Internal Service Fund, which is our self, you know, our deductibles of any losses, in addition to cleanup expenses with any sewer backups or water main breaks. Looking at our 2019 budget, in this second column, compared to 2018 adopted budget, you'll see an increase of $22 million, and you can see the percentage increase by each individual line, but on the far right, as I was talking before, that's a percentage of each line item to the 2019 total spend. As you can see, our largest line item is payroll and related, 38.46%. What I'm gonna do is kinda walk through some of the big drivers on that. So payroll and related, as you saw, the number 72.7, it's comprised of regular pay, and there's an increase of $2.5 million on that. As I mentioned before, the collective bargaining unit agreements contain a 3% COLA, that's accounting for $1.1 million of the increase. We're also, as you can see down here in the headcount, are 490 proposed heads, it's up from the 489 in total, but we're actually shifting headcount from CIP into OpEx, so operating budgets going up seven heads, and that's primarily transferring five heads out of a capital program, which was the RF Automated Meter Reading Program, we've completed all our phases, so those folks are now, are not in a capital mode, they're going back into a maintenance, so they become operating people. That's contributing, attributing $400,000 into the budget, and salary, collective bargaining increments, about $300,000 of that $2.5 million, and the remaining $340,000 is to headcount increases. As you can see, overtime is going up slightly, 184,000. You might have remembered from the newspapers, we had over 100 breaks in January of '18, which drove a incredible overtime, as guys were out all hours of night, working double time to get the system back up. Of the 184,000, about 100,000 of that represents the cost of living increases from the contracts, so it's just about 74,000. Hopefully, we will not have a break season like we had this year. As mentioned before, the employee benefits, the majority of the increase, the $5.4 million, that is the medical. 2018's adopted budget, the contribution was someone wearing rosy glasses thinking we'd get away with $9 million. Well, the actual is forecasted at about $14 million. So the actuaries were right, so the forecast with medical inflation is 15.3, and that's split between the OpEx and the CIP headcount, so 12.7 million of that is going into the OpEx budget. The OPEB trust, as I mentioned before, $9,145, that's split between the OpEx and the CIP, so 7.6 million, and that's up from the $5 million range, so that's between those items, those are the significant increases in the employee medical. Debt service, as I mentioned, of the geo-bond issue. Here's the August 2018 geo-bond, the, it was $120 million, but we utilized the $13 million of premium to pay issuance costs, as well as pay off the short-term interest from the re, from the maturing ban. As you can see, the interest on the bonds going up from 18.9 to 22.9, principal going from 34.9 up to 41.9, that's basically the general obligation bond that was issued, in addition to the conversion of the IFOs for the Drinking Water and Clean Water Fund loans to permanent loan obligations. So when you look at the 2019 Proposed Budget and the water utility, you have your revenues on the top for 97.8 to balance the expenditures of 97.8 million. So what we went before, in total, that was the combination by line item for the different expenses that are split between water and sewer. There's combined departments that are part sewer, part water, but then there's water treatment, supply, and control, those are all dedicated water supplies. So going through to look at, what does this mean? The sale of water, as you're aware, that the MDC's water bills, there's a volumetric charge, and then there's a fixed service charge. So the service charges are budgeted at 24.7, that's the $14.99 per month, that's fixed, that's not changing year to year. And then the domestic use charge, that's your volumetric, the $64,032. The way you calculate that is you have a consumption assumption. 2018's was 18.4 million CCFs. For our 2018 forecast, we're coming in a little bit under that, about 18,250. As you can all remember, August was one of the wettest August, it's raining in September, it rained last night, the reservoirs are spilling at this point, so that they're beyond capacity. So we're, we're gonna go back with our 18.4 million CCFs, and that's, time is the $4.38 is the CCF charge. Hydrant Maintenance Line is increasing, 239,000, that's the hydrant maintenance fee going up from $100, so $125. And the Fire Protection Service is going up 1.8 million, that's a combination rate, and cross, other water revenues is cross-connection, that's a user fee. When the district's forces would come out to inspect irrigation systems for backflow, it was never charged, we're doing a per-use charge. Here's a, here's how it looks for 100 CCFs, I know Joe was using 61 million, 61 CCFs, I just picked around 100 CCFs, that's more along my household residential consumption per year. As you can see, prior year, $3.14, going up to $3.48, the top line is a member town, so you've got about a 10.8% increase on the volumetric piece. The water fixed charge, $14.98, is flat. As Joe mentioned, the Clean Water Project charge is going from $3.80 to $4.10, that's based upon our debt authorization model. And sewer customer service charge is also a fixed monthly fee, is going from $3 to $6, so all in all, for about 100 CCFs, about $100 increase for a typical member town customer. Down below is a non-member town customer, that's basically folks that live in Glassmary, Farmington, South Windsor, and East Granby. They have the same uniform rate, they pay the same customer service charge, but they have a general surcharge outside the district that is equivalent to the customer service charge, and in addition, they may have a special capital charge, as any capital improvements in a non-member town that specifically benefits them, the residents in there pay in the entirety of that improvement. They don't have, they're a non-member town, they don't have the Clean Water Project charge. The Clean Water Project charge is only applicable to MDC customers that have both MDC water service and sewer service, so it's only one of the, only applicable to folks in the eight member towns. What I have here is just looking at, here I used 120 CCFs, just as comparative, you know. So if you're using 120 CCFs, based upon our 2019 rates, you're spending about $600 a year, residential service. Aquarian Northern Division, that's Granby and Simsbury, about $448. Connecticut Water Unionville, 576, we actually supply the water to Connecticut Water there. Aquarian Water, Eastern Region, Eastern Division, which is their largest branch, $663. South Central and other regional entity like us, 726, and Connecticut Water, their largest division is 954. I wanna emphasize, this does not include the customer ser, the Clean Water Project charge, I'm just showing the base water versus our base water, delivery of water. On the general fund side, the sewer is our business, the sewer is our general fund. Basically, our main revenue is the taxing member municipalities, total budget of $91.4 million, $91.4 million in expenses. The increase in other government agencies, that's our revenue from septic and sludge, septic that we take in, we take septic in from the member towns and other towns in Connecticut, as well as in Massachusetts. We then in turn incinerate that and generate heat, which we convert into electricity. The heat, the generation facility allows us to generate about 40, up to 40% of our electricity needs down at the Hartford Water Pollution Control Facility, which helps us avoid electric, electrical costs. Other sewer revenues, and the sewer, sewer user charges, those are the volumetric for high-flow folks, as well as the tax-exempt people, their rate is $4.64 per CCF proposed for 2019, and some of the volume is driven by increases from contract services from Bradley and Windsor, Windsor Lock, excuse me. The other sewer revenue is a slight increase of the $2.9 million. There is some groundwater remediation revenue from some folks, but I wanna also point out, you may have heard in the, in the news about the Connecticut landfill, you'll see down here a contingency of $4 million. That's offsetting $4 million of revenue up here in the other sewer revenues, that's Connecticut deep groundwater remediation revenue. They are not paying for it, but we're, we're showing it as a revenue with an offsetting contingent liability. The Avalorum, as we've mentioned, is going up 15%, so this is a distribution, the 51.754, so for the town of Bloomfield, Bloomfield share from 2018 was 7.24%, 2019, 7.26%. Those percentages are determined based upon our charter. It's the ratio of Bloomfield's prior three-year cash receipts received from direct taxation over the total of the eight member towns, and that's the percentage that's, that's calculated, how it's calculated, so all in all, year on year, it's about a $500,000 increase on Avalorum on an MDC calendar year. Obviously, you guys are on municipal calendar, so there's a slight difference in, in the percentage. I throw this chart up here, and once again, I will caveat it, this does not include the Clean Water Project charge. This is just looking at the base sewer service, as Joe LaVerdi had talked about. The MDC issues tax warrants to the eight member towns, and there's four payments throughout the year, they remit, they remit that money to the district. The town of Bloomfield and the other member towns, they put the MDC's Avalorum in their operating budgets, and then they figure, they, that figures out into their mill rate. So looking at, what this is, a little bit different version than, variation than Joe did, this is on an average residential, single homeowner occupied, based on the census data. So in Bloomfield, it's about $241 per annum for the base sewer service that comes through the, your property taxes. And just comparing the two bars on the right, this is the tie-in bond, they, they conduct the periodic water and sewer surveys, so the 2016 Connecticut average is 472 per annum, and the median was 401. Through this charting here, because you heard Joe talking about the Clean Water Project, and this has got a lot on, and I encourage you to look at it online. So cumulative through December 31st, 2017, we have total capital authorizations, we had two referendums, $800 million each, and a supplemental authorization of $140 million, so the MDC is authorized to spend $1.74 million, $1.74 billion on the Clean Water Project. Through December 31st, 2017, the MDC has collected $330 million in Clean Water Project charge revenue. Forecasted for 2018, $61.2 million, 2019 is, is forecasted at $66.0 million, that's $4.10 times 16.1 million CCF per year. Total grants, we received almost $257 million in grants from the state of Connecticut through the end of 12/31/17, we're anticipating another $47 million in '18, and $33 million in 2019. And through the end of 2017, the district has expended $1.1 million in construction costs to contractors, and by the end of fiscal '19, we'll be at $1.4 billion. Total debt service, $150 million through 2017, by the end of 2019, it'll be $246 million cumulatively spent. Through September of 2018, we've issued $770 million worth of outstanding long-term debt, primarily state of Connecticut Clean Water Fund, state revolving fund loans, those are 2% 20-year loans, good deal, they also come along with the grants. MDC general obligation bonds, $71.2 million, and we've issued $225 million of revenue bonds, and we currently have $235.5 million state of Connecticut, state revolving fund IFOs, those are short-term revolving loans that convert into long-term loans. So the interest and principal for 2019, the $9.1 million, you can see, $14 million from revenue bonds, 4.6 from general obligation bonds, and 30 million from state loans. The chart on the side here, the blue line is the original peak curve of specialist sewer service charge, we built it up gradually in 30, 30 to 35, 30 cent increments, so that we wouldn't have a, you know, huge uptick when we started getting $49 million worth of debt service. We wanted to smooth it up, and it will stay at the peak, which basically mimics the term of the revenue bond, which are 30 years. So currently, originally, we had 17.9 million CCFs, but water consumption has dropped over the last 10 years, so the average consumption for the last 10 years for folks A and both, and bless you, both MDC water and sewer services, 16.1 million, obviously, 17.9 on denominator is a better number, so that's why the peak, why the flat plateau moved This is a little variation of the slide that Joe had shown before. The Integrated Plan, what this is showing is, is that the $35 million a year in sewer capex, the Integrated Plan is shifting into, into the Clean Water Project CIP, so we're not going to issue general obligation bonds every two years, which drive debt service the following year. So this is just kind of an example of showing, you know, if we have a long-term control, Integrated Plan approval in 2020, we can move the $35 to $70 million from a general obligation bond into a revenue bond, at $70 million, and only issue a $14 million general obligation bond, instead of having to issue $84 million, which, this $84 million is being paid by the Avalorum debt service. So that's kind of the power of the Integrated Plan and how it helps the Avalorum. And the last slide in here is, is the Capital Improvement Plan. This is basically the authorizations for new capital projects, $73.1 million, $29.9 million for water, $23.9 million for wastewater, and the combined projects, $19.3 million. So that's kind of the overview of, of the 2019 Proposed Budget.
Questions? Questions? Counselor Law?
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's probably gonna be relatively lengthy, I apologize for that, I have lots of questions going through this, some general and some specific, and obviously, there's a lot of material here, and take a lot of time to digest. I guess, a couple of general questions first. I certainly think that the issue with the sewer system needs to be addressed, I think everyone does, and at the end, you have a slide in the budget presentation sort of comparing the sewer, sewer costs relative to an industry study, that kind of thing. It appears that we have not, that one of the problems here is that the MDC has not spent enough on infrastructure cost. So one of my, one of my immediate reactions from all of this is, you know, we're kicking the can down the road again, and we haven't charged what we needed to do to keep the system working properly. So what's, I guess I'd like a general reaction to that comment. So what's, I guess I'd like a general reaction to that comment.
I agree completely with you. This is not a local issue. This is not a state issue. This is a national issue, and it's not just sewer and water systems. It's all infrastructure. It's why you hear about infrastructure and infrastructure bills all the time. Communities built roads, sewers, water pipes in the late 1800s, early 2000s, and then set it and forget it. And there wasn't a lot of attention that was placed on them because they were functioning properly. Now they're getting, they're all getting to the point, whether you're talking roads or pipes, they're all getting to be 100 years old, or, you know, depending on which facility you're looking at, and they're beginning to deteriorate. And so the fact that whether, if we're referring just to sewer bills for this specific example, yes, it probably means that the sewer bills for customers should have been higher in the 80s, the 90s, the 2000s, but they weren't. They were kept low across the board, across the country, because everybody thought their sewer system was running great. Well, now, across the country, these systems are failing at an alarming rate, and so now we're having that issue of needing to react to that. So the $450 million worth of sewer repairs that we've identified, the knee-jerk reaction could be, let's fix all that in two years, or 10 years, or five years, right? But we know that that's not sustainable, that's too much. So what we're looking to do is that $450 million that I talked just strictly for sewer repairs that we've identified, we're spreading that out over 20 to 25 years. Had we done them faster, then the sewer rate hikes immediately would be even higher. So we're trying to manage the situation of putting the money that's being spent into the infrastructure system, elongating it out so that we can try to minimize the rate impacts, and hopefully, the overall solution is a better solution.
Well, I think one, you know, first of all, I really think what we're looking at is a, the business model and the, you know, the management of our water utility, because that's really what it is. I think at one point, you made the comment, you work for a company. It's not a company, it's a water utility. And the, you know, the thing is, we need to set those rates so that it is sustainable. We also need to do that cognizant of who can pay and who has, you know, who can pay, who has difficulty. And one of the things we're going to be taking up later tonight is a resolution talking about conservation pricing, which is not giving discounts to high-volume users, not giving discounts to people who use a lot of water, but instead reversing that to the people that pay for the water. So let's see. I guess, what do you expect from DEEP from this? You know, because you, do you believe DEEP will approve this plan?
I can't speak for DEEP, but they had technical staff that were at all of our, that were at 17 meetings that I mentioned. I think that the technical staff understand that the reasons for the technical shift in the plan, which is to go from an all-tunnel plan to a, just a downtown tunnel, sewer separation in North Hartford, and significant sewer rehabilitation. I believe that they will understand that as a better plan. What I think DEEP will come back with is say, you're saying you're going to do this over 40 years, you should do it sooner. And if we do it sooner, it means that more has to be spent faster. It means that contractors are going to be on top of each other. It means that you are probably going to have bids that are going to skyrocket high because you only have so many contractors that can excavate in the towns and cities at one time. You only have so many contractors that can line pipes at the same time. So I don't think it'll be a feasible plan. So I hope is that DEEP understands that the 40 years that we're asking for is a reasonable approach to address all of these issues collectively as part of the integrated plan.
We have to be mindful of all the other councilors that might have questions to ask as well.
That's fine. Are we going to be able to take all of the questions tonight?
We probably won't be able to take all the questions tonight, but we do have to be mindful that there's other councilors that would.
Sure. That's fine. Would you like, how many more questions would you like me to ask?
I'd like to ask one more question, and then we can have the other councilors take part in this discussion.
Okay.
So as soon as he's finished and.
No, I want to yield my time to him.
Oh.
Actually, that's fine. Actually, Madam Mayor, if I could ask two more questions, then I will be done.
Hold on. Does anyone else have any questions?
I'm sure they have. I'm sure they do.
Okay. Okay, so Councilor Goff, if you can ask one more question, that'd be great.
Okay. Well, I have two good ones. I guess what I'd really like to understand on the budget thing, which I don't, is you have on the, you have at the end for the medical increase of $5 million. This is on page seven. You have an increase in medical contribution from 2018 projected or adopted, whatever, from $7.4 million to $12.7 million in 2019 proposed. Now you have that broken out into the operating headcount and the capital improvement plan headcount. I'm a little confused with the capital improvement plan, why there are, I mean, do we actually have people in-house doing that, or do we contract most of that out, so why we're paying their medical bills? But I see on the other page that you have an increase in operating personnel, proposed change of seven people. So I'm very, I don't complete, I don't understand how we've been, you know, we ran from seven and a half, or six and a half million dollars in 2017, $7.4 million in 2018. Yeah, that's a sizable increase, but then we're going to $12.7 million in 2019 with an increase of seven people? I'm not following that at all.
Let me explain it to you.
Good.
So 75 people in CIP, this is your CapEx headcount. These are our engineering staff, our inspection, and our construction managers. So those are MDC employees that are being funded through CapEx authorizations that you saw in the last slide. We're going from 75 of those heads down to 72. That's a difference of five. Those five that are converting up into the operating, they were on the capital program called the Automated Meter Reading, the RF meter program. Those are the guys that are going around and installing them. So that program, that capital program is done. So now they're in a maintenance mode, so they're going back into maintenance. So you have 418 folks in the operating budget. Now let me go back to that next slide, and it should make sense to you now. So this is our CIP headcount, medical, in 2018 adopted. Our total contribution into our internal service fund, I'm assuming Bloomfield has an internal service fund as well. So we made a contribution of $9 million in the internal service fund. All the medical claims from Anthem are paid to the internal service fund. The estimate for medical expenses for 2018 is $14.3 million. So that's a $5.3 million deficit. Our internal service fund at the end of 12/31/17 had a deficit of $8.5 million, of which $5.2 million was the incurred but not reported liability. So that meant there was a $3 million deficit already.
So you're paying your medical claims, basically?
We are paying our medical claims. We're paying them out of the internal service. We're not funding it.
Yeah, yeah, but you're running a deficit every year.
Yeah, we ran a deficit.
You're right. So your actual medical costs aren't $6 million, they're $12 million, $9 million.
Here is $14.3. The prior year was $12.7. The hope was is that that was an aberration of peak, but it didn't happen, and there was a lot of constraints here on rates to keep them down, so there were some rosy glasses, not real. So this is, this is the reality of the actuary estimate for the medical claims. So we're putting forth for the Board of Finance to consider to fully fund what the actuary estimate is, because they're more true than what our internal was over the past years we were like. So that's why that's driving it. It's not the seven-person increase in heads that's driving it. It's that the 2017, 2018 numbers were, contributions were lower than the actual medical claims being submitted.
By a lot.
By a lot.
Councilor DiLorenzo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this. I think as Councilor Goff said, it's going to take a while for us to look at some of those plays. Just on the budget itself, so there's no talk about going away from a defined benefit plan and going over to a 401K or some other individual contribution?
There was a lot of discussion on that. Our original defined benefit plan had a 5% contribution. So with our actuary, and you have to understand, as I went back in this headcount, about 418 folks, about 80% of those guys are out in the street. They're blue collar in the street at 2:00 in the morning, knee-deep in water. So they're very physical labor. What ends up happening, and this is what the advice of our actuary was, is that they're, you know, during the shift, I came from the private sector, and yes, in the late 1980s and 1990s, there was a shift from a defined benefit plan into a 401K. What ends up happening in the municipal world is that this is very strenuous labor on these folks. They're not white collar folks. So what happens is, they're not saving on their own, where the defined benefit provides them a formula, 2% for each of the years. They put, you know, 32 years, and they walk out on 64%. They don't have to plan. If they're left to plan for their contribution, they don't have enough. So they end up working longer, and what you start having is, you start having, this is very tedious manual labor, higher workers' comp's claims. So the model is that it's actually more beneficial for that type of population to have a defined benefit plan, because then they can go out and retire. We have three retirement categories, age 65, because it's normal retirement. We have a rule of 85, which is age plus service, when you can go out full retirement. You can go out 55 and 10, with a 5% haircut for each year under 65. So we have guys hitting rule of 85 around 55 years. If you're doing 32 years in the streets, where you have some back issues, you've got some knee issues, you've got some permanencies. So they're not as efficient, they're great guys, but age has caught up with them. So when you factor the workers' comp in there and everything else, the permanencies, it takes away. They don't have enough money in a DC plan of 457 or 403 to retire, so they stay along longer. And then we have to deal with workers' comp, and then when they're not in, we cover it over time, which is more expensive. So that's all the considerations that we're taking in that analysis.
I noticed also in here, there's step program? So you're still giving steps? That hasn't come out of that?
The union contract, it's not longevity, that's steps. So the union contract, as they, as they have, as a satisfactory, you know, rating, they get an increase in addition to COLA. It's part of the union contract.
So what does that amount to?
That was. The steps increase was $300,000 of the $2.5 million. Cost of living was 1.1, that's the COLA. The transfers of the positions from the CIP, those five headcounts into the operating budget was $400,000, and the remaining was new headcount, $340,000. So contractually obligated, you know, 1.1, 1.4 of the 2.5 is based upon the union contract.
I don't know. That's all for now, but thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions. One for the town manager. Are we in the process of analyzing this financial statement and this proposal so as to determine what the mill rate increase will be for the town residents?
There's a variety of factors that go into the mill rate. Obviously, one of the larger factors is the MDC budget and the amount of the increase, which as Clint pointed out, is approximately $500,000, at least as of this time. But we don't know what the grant list increase is. We don't know what the state revenue structure in terms of grants being provided to the state. As I've indicated in the past, I think the recent election may have given us some hope that there would not be draconian decreases in state aid to the town. We get about 10% of our budget from the state of Connecticut in terms of finance, financial grants, primarily for the Board of Education. There are a variety of other revenue sources, as you know, that we get. It would be hard at this point in time to say exactly what any increase would be in terms of tax rate. But certainly, a 7% increase, $500,000, is much higher than, you know, the norm at this point, given rates of inflation and other things. However, you have to commend them. They've eliminated, they've set up a trust fund for their OPEB. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's primarily retiree health insurance, and that's a major factor. It's been built into contracts for decades, probably 50 years, and we have not had a requirement to fund that separately from just an ongoing every-year budget appropriation. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, a number of years ago, started putting pressure on municipalities to set up reserve funds to pay for that, particularly given the rapid increase in medical costs for retirees. So most municipalities now have set up trust funds. The MDC has set one up. They're now hired an actuary to give them some idea of how they can fund that on a phase-end basis, which is the same thing we're doing with the town, and that's an appropriate financial measure that they've taken. I think the biggest thing that you should be aware of, and Patrick, it's a different approach to the same problem, is that they were successful, if you look at the background information, in negotiating out for future hirees, or future hires, retiree health insurance for spouses and dependents. When you set up a trust fund under OPEB, and I may be getting into a lot of detail, and eyes are going to be glazing over with this, but when you set up a trust fund under state statute, it allows you to invest in a more fluid and flexible investment strategy. And that, therefore, the actuary say, well, your rate of return will probably be higher. So therefore, that reduces the liability. You've heard the MDC say they have over $300 million liability for retiree health insurance, and there are no reserves there. And that's why OPEB and these trust funds are being set up, and the town of Bloomfield's doing the same thing, and it's a major driver in our budgets and has been, and will continue to be for a while. And the council's really aware of this. This is something that we're working into. But I think that the elimination of retiree health insurance going forward for spouses and dependents is a major reduction, and that will reduce. I don't know, John, if that is included in your 300 million, or whether that's already been taken into account or not.
The 300 million was prior to that, so.
Okay.
And that 300 million, to your point, was at a discount rate because we had no investments mimicking a 20-year municipal index, so it was around 4%. The step in for the ADC is at a 6.25%. So by setting this up and having a multi-year plan, we're getting the benefit of a higher discount rate, therefore, the liability will come down. So as we're calendar year, we're going to be going through the Gatsby 75 booking this year. So this is all part of the plan, and it's going back to, why is it not funded? There was a, due to CRA arbitration, we had fronted the medical costs for the folks that were in that contract, but in the settlement, we received nothing. So that kind of put us behind the eight ball, so now we're restarting.
I think one of the things you have to look at is that the drivers in this budget are medical, including OPEB and debt service. And the debt service is designed to look at our environmental issues of our water and sewer utility, and they're being addressed. I think there's some different scenarios here, but those are the facts in terms of debt service and medical costs, and those are the major drivers that I see in the budget at this point in time. I think it's interesting that we still haven't resolved the revenue issue for the effluent from Mount Trashmore from the state, and that's something that can't be allowed to grow exponentially year after year after year without some type of resolution, but it's my understanding that there are discussions and potential legal issues between the MDC and the state of Connecticut on that particular one. That's the contingency issue that was raised in the presentation. So that's a long answer to your question.
Answer the tax increase question.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilor Man?
Well, thank you for that, Town Manager Shank. We'll stay tuned to see what actually, how it will affect us later on in our taxes. I just want one quick comment. It's pretty obvious that the integrated plan seems to be more appealing than going to the status quo, and it seemed so obvious that, I didn't understand what all the rest of the paper was for, but I also wanted to ask a question. Earlier in the year, we were told by the MDC that there are a number of CSOs in northern Bloomfield that were causing us some difficulty, and there's supposed to be a study of it, and we hadn't heard anything back on that. Has that been part of this engagement?
Are you referring to the north branch of the Park River in Hartford, or as it relates to?
They said there are outflows in Bloomfield area. I was in Bloomfield. That affected that order of check, which we weren't unaware of totally.
So the north branch of the Park River is a water body that's, ends in, at the Connecticut River, but it goes through Hartford and up through Bloomfield. That's the water body, it's one of the two water bodies that the MDC is required to completely eliminate their combined sewer overflows.
eliminate their combined sewer overflows from. What the study entailed was looking at the bacteria load, which is what is in combined sewer overflows. It has combined, it has sanitary sewer with, with stormwater that overflows. So what the study was looking at was the bacteria that's in the river even when CSO discharges aren't discharging, because they only discharge about two or three times a year. What the result was, is that the north branch of the Park River still has high bacteria in it, which is unrelated to the combined sewer overflows. So if the ultimate goal for the north branch of the Park River is to address the bacteria in the north branch of the Park River, it will be from sources from Hartford and Bloomfield that's unrelated to the combined sewer overflows. It's, it's common in stormwater, it's common in Brooks, it's, 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 it's not a problem just in this one watershed. But if the ultimate goal is to have no bacteria in the north branch of the Park River, that will not be achieved through just eliminating the CSOs.
Well, we never get, we never get a final report back that actually that was looked at, or they found out where the CSOs were coming from, and so we're not sure that...
I believe the study is still ongoing. I believe the study is still ongoing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McCleary.
Just a quick follow-up to that, and then I'll ask my question. I think he's referring to the smoke test that was done a couple, maybe last year sometime, where they thought the farm land in Bloomfield was causing the, from the old farm land causing the, the seepage into the north branch of the Park River?
So the, the smoke test that was done was part of a sanitary sewer evaluation survey. We had done similar evaluations of sewer systems in Newington, West Hartford, and Windsor, but we had not done Bloomfield. So two years ago, we looked at the entire sewer system in Bloomfield to look at the condition of the sewer system and where was that flow that I mentioned, where it goes up to 18 mg/d when it rains? We were looking to see where it was coming from. So we did smoke testing in areas where we thought the flow was high. That actually is how we found the brook that's connected to the sewer system, I forgot the name of the street, but the one that I mentioned, where there's actual stormwater that's coming into the sewer system that we need to take out, was found through the smoke testing program. So the smoke testing was related to trying to find where is the inflow, the sources of groundwater and clean water getting into the sewer system. So it's unrelated to the bacteria that would be in the north branch of the Park River.
Okay. Well, my, my real question is for finance guy. So I guess, I shouldn't go off of rumors, but I've been hearing that there will be some discounts to a particular commercial organization that's located in Bloomfield. And I got an email this week that they've put in permits to expand a certain facility. Is that the increase of $8 million is part of that increase of them expanding, and have you...
What, $8 million are you talking about?
Well, I'm looking at the sale of water and the revenues...
No.
On page nine?
No.
So if they go online, are you forecasting the increase in this regular rate?
No, this is, this is, this is flat consumption. This is 18.4 million CCFs, which was the budget assumption.
Is that for commercial or for residential combined?
That's everything, that's total consumption, 18.4 million of water consumption. 2018's estimated actual is 18,250.
So did you take into account that, that commercial entity has decided to expand their facility?
No. It's basically, what are they, 375 CCFs?
About 500.
About 500, yeah, well, 500,000 gallons. So it's not, it's based, based upon what the experience rate is for 2018.
Okay, a follow-up to that. Have you put in your budget, if you, I don't know if the board is disgusted or whatever the case may be, have you put in your, your, your budget the potential discounts for them?
There's no customer in 2018 that's above 600, 600,000 gallons a day. So we're consistent with our 2018 consumption, so there's no discount in here. This doesn't have, this forecast is based upon everybody below that.
So if your board decides to give a discount to any commercial organization, are you going to go back and ask the finance committee to readjust the budget? And will we have a, will we be notified as member towns that that is happening? And will we be given, doing timely notice?
If, if, if there is a customer that comes in and starts using more than 600,000 gallons a day, that's, there's not a customer that's budgeted in, in this 2019 proposed. So that would mean that someone is, is up, there would be surplus of revenue, which will create, you know, obviously, an increase in net asset in the water utility. The, the Board of Finance throughout the year, they can make adjustments to the budget through budget transfers and so forth. But right now, the budget is 18.4 million CCFs, it assumes that there's no one above that rate.
All right, thank you. Just a quick comment. I've just, and then I'm done, just my comment and I'm done. I've just noticed that every year, the clean water fee has gone up, and I understand from experience, the construction costs, and, you know, you never, until you do line in or you inspect the, the sewage, you never know what you may expect. The water rates have been going up every year, but people are on a fixed income. Wages are flat, productivity at organizations is up high, people are trying to figure out where the next meal is going to come from. And every year, there's been an increase in the rate. But yet, I hear that, you know, and I know that, you know, tubs and laundromats and everything else is, energy consumption is down, I understand that. And I understand that water, you know, you need to sell water, even though you say you're not in the business of selling water. But I think we need to really be cognizant and be mindful of the residential side of things, because people are struggling. And sometimes we sit up high and look at numbers in paper and think that it's okay, but we really need to consider our residential side. So from where I sit, if there was a discount given, I would like to see a discount given to the residential side as a Christmas bonus. I don't care if it's five cents or whatever, but I would like to see a discount given to the commercial, the residential side. And if you can't do it, just keep it flat. I think people will be elated about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have a more general question. What are we doing to reduce overhead costs year over year? Do we have a plan for the next five years? And my second question would be, do we have any future hires that are not reflected here in these numbers?
Good question. As, as you look back over years, the headcount, probably when I got to the district in 2007, was over 700 people. So...
And I, and I noticed that, but I, I'm more interested in what plans do you have for the next five years to reduce?
Well, part of the responses, we've kind of gotten, we've invested in technology, and that's one of the reasons that we were able to go from 700 folks down to where we are. There are, to, to your point, there are, obviously for 2018, we have projected, you know, be at 399 folks, but we've got five people, so for all intents and purposes, we're at 404, because those five people are down here already. We are kind of lean in some areas, and we have held off in 2018. The reason why we're at 399 was because the water revenues, the consumption was down. We had the horrendous breaks in January, and we had to go to our board in September for almost a half a million dollars to cover overtime resulting from those breaks. So in, through 2018, we were asking the folks to not fill some of the headcount that was adopted, so that we could make sure that we end at 2018 in a, you know, balanced fund position. Our revenues are going to be down, we're making it up with some cost savings. Part of it was through, you know, headcount vacancies. In finance, I've got about four vacancies.
Four.
So, I mean, I just...
That's not reflected.
Well, I'm, I've just filled a controller that was vacant for, since 2017 in September. I've got a manager of budget and analysis that is vacant, that's why you see me. And, and I also have a manager of treasury that's vacant. So, so in this year, I've issued the CAFR, I've done the geo-bond sale, now I'm doing the budget. I could use a little help to help strengthen our internal control environment. So there are some, there are some positions that are required to be filled, to, in order to have continuity of operations.
And, and that's good. Is there any positions that are currently there that you guys are looking at to say, okay, we may not need this?
Well, we, we look at it, you know, on a daily basis, just what we did in 2018. We look at what we can stretch in order to, our main goal when we issue a budget is to make sure that we don't erode net asset, a fund balanced position when bad things happen. Like, you know, right out of the gate in January, we were in a $900,000 hole in the water utility, and then we were hoping that during the peak consumption months of May through September, we would have above the 18.4. The year before, we were at 19.1. Obviously, with nine-plus inches of rain in August, kind of takes some of the wind out of your sails. So basically, we've done a, a management job to make sure that we delay and put off, but at some point, we got to come back. And we're also in the middle of a, a business transformation, reimplementation of SAP. So we've got people working, you know, three, you know, two or three hats at the same time. So we, we try to be cognizant and we do what we can, but I can't, right now, I don't, I don't know where we're at. We might dilate one or two, delay one or two, but it's not going to be a significant amount.
Counselor Mayor?
First, I'd like to answer a question that was asked before, with a half a million increase in our budget resulting from MDC would do. It's about 6 tenths of a percent increase, because assuming we have about an $80 million tax level, so it's, that puts it in perspective. Obviously, that doesn't feed down to every individual, but all things being equal, it does that to us. I, I am not going to beat up on you guys. I, I really am sympathetic with many of your problems, and I don't know, I don't have any bright ideas of how to handle them, because your problems that relate to, you get your revenue from selling water, and that's gone way down over the years, and, but your expenses, you're, you're not really in the sewage or water business, you're in the pipe repair business. And I, and you, as you've described it, it's, it's a, it's a real problem, because your expenses have no relationship to your, your products, and, well, hopefully they do, but, but I, I understand where you're coming from, and I, I don't know how to give you any guidance. You already are downsizing your budget really for people. If all those people are, and you said 80% of them are out there repairing pipes, so we, we need that done, and there's just seemingly escape from it. So I, I'm very sympathetic with your problem and glad I don't have to deal with it directly. Thank you.
Counselor Waterhouse? No? Okay, so thank you very much to the MDC. Oh, we, yep, yep, go ahead.
Can you go to the board?
Do you want to go to the mic?
It's Al Taylor.
Yep, and state your name and exactly how you are with the MDC, that'd be good.
I'm Alvin Taylor. I'm an MDC commissioner, one of the commissioners from Bloomfield. I think one of the things that we should be cognizant of here is, until 1979, 80% of your infrastructure was financed by the federal government. Federal government got out of that business in 1979, so that essentially, what we are now looking at, because there are no federal dollars coming in, your sewers and other things, you did that on federal money. That money is not around. And that's one of the issues that we're having to contend with, is that essentially, now you've got to do the financing a hundred cents on the dollar. Before, in the old days, it cost you 20% of whatever, so 20, 20 cents out of every dollar that you were investing in your infrastructure, you basically were getting money, 80% of that from Washington. So that's one of the problems that we're having to contend with. The other thing is, look, I think people need to understand, the commissioners sit there, and they're struggling with this stuff. And, you know, we're squeezing, we're trying to do everything that we possibly can. We cut a deal with the unions that basically took the spouses out of the, of the insurance policy. That was about a $48 million bogey that we got rid of. And, you know, we argued about that long and hard, and there were trade-offs, there was giving and taking there. If someone has a better idea, we'd like to hear it. We don't claim that we have all the answers, but, you know, we're struggling because essentially the revenues are going this way. We're about 20 million gallons a day down in terms of water consumption. And we're trying to make this thing work. But also, the thing that you have to remember here, 1973, this area had a chance to do it and was going to cost $300 million. It was voted down. So, you know, now it's costing us pretty close to $2 billion. The other thing I think that you need to be aware of is that we are under the gun. Federal government has said basically, you've got to do this. And we're trying to figure out the cheapest way that'll give us the biggest bang for the buck. Now, if we don't, basically, they're going to do Deer Island on you. And I would suggest that you look up Deer Island, because what's going to happen, they're going to take it across the street to the federal court, and basically, a judge is going to sit there. What the judge is going to do, he's going to hire, or she is going to hire, a group of consultants, and he's, they're going to turn to the consultants and say, what do we have to do this year? The consultants are going to say, this is the way we're going to go. The judge is going to say, fine, and do it. They'll do it, and they'll send you a beer, your proportionate share. Now, we're trying to avoid that, but once again, we don't claim to have all the answers, but we're struggling and we're working hard at it. Right now, for the Clean Water Project, we're ahead of schedule and we're under budget.
Thank you. I'm not sure if, it's, it's, we have a lot on the agenda, but I'm not sure if the MDC can stick around to answer some more questions if needs be.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I was asking the MDC if they could stick around if it's possible, because we do have a lot on the agenda, but we also have citizen statements and petitions that this might come up in. So I was going to ask them just to hang around for a minute, just so they can hear. I think we understand the plight of the MDC, but I'm also going to echo Counselor McCleary, the plight of the residents who this is coming through. When everything is going up and nothing is increasing in their income, it's great that we can do 3% cost of living and a step increase for the employees at the MDC, and probably our residents don't have that ability. So this is definitely a, a struggle for our residents, and we have to take that into consideration. And I would also ask our commissioners to take into consideration our residents and the financial implication on our residents. So that's all I'm going to say about that to our commissioners and to the MDC reps. At this time, we're going to go to citizen statements and petitions. Please remember, there is a three-minute time limit for each person. It's after nine, and we're asking you to be very mindful of everyone else that might have to speak.
So, because of the, the system problem here, I'm not able to, that's okay. I'm not able to, to get this up on screen, but, was that, it's just, so I put together a short video just to bring us up to date, or actually to, to show some of the history of what we've been dealing with as far as MDC and the discounts. So I'm primarily speaking about if, if the, if there's a lot of financial problems with, you know, getting the, getting the finances in, it makes no sense at all to incentivize water.
In 2015, our group accessed emails between the MDC and Niagara. The MDC discounts were a direct response to Niagara's requests. An email dated August 20th from Niagara to the MDC states, "At this stage, the special sewer service charge imposed by the MDC, if not mitigated in some way, makes our move to an area within MDC jurisdiction essentially cost prohibitive." And here is the email. Niagara asked for special water rates as well. In this September 29th email, Scott Jellison tells Niagara, "We are working on a new water rate for users who exceed 500,000 gallons per day. I need to develop logic to support this rate." The results are seen at the Bloomfield Town Council meeting of December 14th, 2015.
As Todd mentioned, we started this journey over a year and a half ago, and I would say that the MDC and the town of Bloomfield jumped through hoops to try and accommodate and attract Niagara. We have just approved two ordinance changes.
Yet, five months later, at a state public hearing, Mr. Jellison still claims that nothing special was done. special was done.
It's in December when we set our ordinances, we had no idea, there's no guarantee that Niagara is even going to buy the property in Bloomfield.
He denies knowledge, "We had no idea," and then quickly shifts to a "No guarantee."
We had no idea, there's no guarantee that Niagara is even going to buy the property. I don't believe the General Assembly ever intended to give the MDC the authority to decide who gets water. We only decide, do we responsibly have the water or don't.
The General Assembly also never intended to give the MDC authority to create special discounts in response to a company's complaint about rates paid by all other users. Yet, this is exactly what they did.
We created a rate structure that would promote the ability of possibility for Niagara to come to Bloomfield.
The mission of the MDC is to provide our customers with safe, pure drinking water, environmentally protective wastewater collection and treatment, and other services that benefit the member towns. The mission says nothing about developing economic growth.
Our job is not to sell water. Our job is to support our towns with economic growth.
As he said, our job is not to sell water, but at the same hearing...
MDC is in the business of selling water.
Here's the bottom line. The current proposed discounts give financial preference to exporters of Connecticut water. These discounts undercut our state's ability to support all Connecticut towns when drought stresses the aquifers. The state would do better by selling water without discounts. Water depletion issues are worldwide, yet high-volume discounts encourage water usage. If water bottling companies are going to ship water out of the MDC watershed, maybe they should even pay a premium rate.
Yeah, that's it. We're both, that discounts would not apply in this case.
Mary Ann Horn?
My name is Mary Ann Horn and I live at 36 Kenmore Road in Bloomfield. I've just handed the clerk a statement for the record. It is a statement by the independent council advocate on MDC's proposed economic development rate. This document includes a concise summary of the proposed economic development rate for very large water users and the special treatment of the Clean Water Project charge for such large users. It also contains the advocate's comments on the proposed economic development rate. Among the concerns raised by the independent consumer advocate in his comments are that the MDC has not provided any analysis to demonstrate that a discount is cost justified. The MDC has not provided any analysis to determine the impact of a discount on water consumption. In the absence of any such analyses, it's not, it's not possible to determine the potential negative cost impact such discounts may have on other customers. And the special treatment of the Clean Water Project charge for the largest customers is inconsistent with the treatment of all other customers. This is unfair. Clearly, the MDC has not done its homework on these proposed large volume discounts. As a Bloomfield resident who conserves water because it's a precious natural resource, I resent MDC's poorly researched attempt to raise revenues by rewarding and incentivizing the use of large amounts of water, unfairly penalizing all other customers. I urge the council not to support these discounts. Thank you.
Val Rosetti, 88 Kenmore Road. So last January, this town council affirmed the principles that the waters of the state are held in public trust for the benefit of this and future generations and also endorsed the state water plan. And sadly, the MDC lobbied furiously against both these principles, using our rate payer, rate payer funds for lobbying. And now this seems like Groundhog Day all over with proposed discounts largely aimed at very large water bottling industries or perhaps beverage industries. The 2016 discounts were rescinded after a public outcry. Now Niagara has recently filed permits to expand its bottling lines, just as a $6 million rate payer funded water main that's needed to raise pressure for more bottling is installed and just as MDC discounts are introduced in preparation for this. It's, was there some sort of unwritten understanding that the discounts would return when Niagara really needed them? They came back. Niagara came here despite the lack of discounts, so why are we now selling our Class A water at below residential rates to a California corporation which is not invested in our water infrastructure? This is not an economic incentive rate. The company's already here, it never phases out. Nothing has changed with drought protection in the state. When we have our next big drought, there's still no mandatory limitation on bottling until the reservoirs reach dire levels and in the MDC's water supply plan, that's 10%. Will be asked to conserve long before a bottling company is affected. And again, at the legislature, the MDC worked vigorously to derail some sensible proposed regulations for the Department of Public Health to oversee bottlers and restrict them during droughts. Residents of the MDC towns voted for the Clean Water Project charges to fund the cleanup of wastewater overflows that pollute the streams, Connecticut River, and Long Island Sound. They didn't vote to give an 80 to 90% exemption on these charges to anyone. So for us, these rates are based on how much water we use, even if it's for irrigating lawns or crops and never seizes sewer. But now for a company like Niagara, this will be based on how much water enters the sewers and since they're actually shipping most of it away in bottles, a huge discriminatory discount is earned. These rate discounts are in total opposition to the ethic of water conservation. The state water plan cites Connecticut as lagging in water conservation ethic. What sense does it make to ask residents to conserve while incentivizing large volume use? How about conservation pricing, where lower baseline rate is given for the amount of water typically used for, needed for daily life and above which rates go up? For example, if Niagara doubles its water use with 600,000 more gallons a day, it could earn a discount of over $1 million a year. Let's forget the discounts and use that for low-income households. And finally, it's time to stop subsidizing environmentally hazardous industries, one that could produce 10 million plastic bottles a day, half of which are never recycled. We no longer have the luxury of ignoring the environmental costs of our actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bradley Cline. I live at 82 Tara Phil Road in Bloomfield. I've been a taxpaying homeowner in the town for 31 years. I have some comments about the Metropolitan District Commission Charter, the one that contains all revisions through January 1st, 2018. I would not recommend anyone reading its 118 pages unless you are an insomniac or are a lawyer working for the MDC and charging by the hour. I should point out that I have a PhD in political science, taught American government and political theory for 14 years, and so am used to reading boring documents. It is always an instructive exercise to do so. From reading the MDC Charter, which I did today again, we learned three things that are important for tonight's deliberations. First, Section 1.1, Establishment of the District, page 4, creates, quote, "A body politic and corporate by the name of the Metropolitan District capable of suing and being sued." In other words, the member towns and/or its citizens can sue the MDC. Second, there is absolutely nothing in the entire document that suggests or states that MDC has anything to do with economic development. Its job is to provide water. It has taxing power, billing power, authority to build infrastructure, all to provide water. Its job is not to promote the use or waste of water and its job is not to create employment or economic development for any jurisdiction. Third, MDC, this is according to the Charter, "Has to provide uniform rates for its service, not varied or staggered rates dependent upon level of use or category of consumer." This is clearly stated in Section 5.4, Water Rates, page 40, quote, "Rates for water shall be uniform throughout the district." I'll repeat, "Rates for water shall be uniform throughout the district." So to reiterate, MDC can be sued, it has no business engaging in economic development, water rates must be uniform. All of this according to its own charter. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and council members. I recently learned that the MDC is proposing economic development rates for water in the Clean Water Project charge. I also learned within the past week that Niagara has applied to our planning department for a permit to add a third bottling line. As it turns out, Niagara is the only business anywhere close to the 600,000 gallon per day threshold to be eligible for MDC's proposed discounts. What a coincidence. MDC is now making good on the deal that struck with Niagara in 2015. MDC revoked the Niagara discounts in 2016 because of public outrage and the drought. That was a tactical retreat on their part since the larger water main that Niagara needs for three or four bottling lines wasn't in place yet. That main will be put in next year. Have any, any MDC member towns had the opportunity to do cost-benefit analysis on how these discount ordinances might impact them? What are Bloomfield's benefits and costs? Benefits, a little bit of permitting fee revenue for the third bottling line, some property tax revenue for additional personal property associated with that line, but no tax revenue on the line itself because manufacturing equipment is exempt from taxing by state law. What are the costs to Bloomfield? More truck traffic, more wear and tear on Woodland Avenue and other roads, negative impact on neighbors' quality of life, negative impact on neighboring property values. That's what I see it, simple. In summary, this stinks. The proposed discounts are unfair because they treat MDC customers inconsistently. They're simply designed to attract and benefit mega-users like water bottlers. The MDC needs to consider other approaches in addressing their financial issues rather than high-volume discounts that were suggested by Niagara in the first place. What I've given the clerk, copies of correspondence from Niagara in 2015 telling the MDC that in order to locate here, that the rates must be lower. Interestingly, an email from Griffin Land declining to sell Niagara a parcel because of concerns about Niagara's impact on property values and harming corporate goodwill in Bloomfield and Windsor. There's also a link to a study of the impacts that big rigs have on roads and the much higher costs associated with maintaining those roads. I ask the council to use what authority it has to object to the MDC's proposed discounts. Thank you.
I don't know. Ask Joe.
Barbara Pickett, 12 Cyrus Lane. So I have two things to say. One is in general, I don't know if the town of Bloomfield makes new development have porous surfaces so the water goes through the darn parking lot and doesn't end up in the sound. All right? I put that out there. The second is around this bulk pricing and others have mentioned it this evening. What is, has anyone, perhaps MDC has considered this, what have you looked at for increased fees over a certain amount of bulk, you know, that's another way to make money. So I don't know if there is something that you have looked at, but I would think that might be the way to go for, for-profit entities. You know, nonprofit, that's a different thing, but for-profit, for-profit there, for-profit here. That's it.
Yeah, I don't want to go out there as a citizen.
Sorry. Thank you.
My name is Lee Sharrow. I live at 12 Cyrus Lane. I have lived there for 42 years, seven months, 11 hours, and approximately 23 minutes. Wow! But I'm not counting. It's got too many fingers. I also want you to know that I'm representing six other people, so what I'm saying is coming from seven of us. And it's really to ask you to consider very seriously and very carefully the information you got tonight. There's a lot of material, felt like some big open spaces in there that things could have gotten lost in or not, not addressed. I'd like to see you look at them very carefully. You all know that you got, some of you got elected as a result of some stuff that went down a couple of years ago. I just am reminding you of that. Some of us have long memories and we don't like it. There's something kind of not right about some of this presentation and it's, it's just not okay. I came to Bloomfield at a time when it was considered an all-American city and it was about inclusivity and taking care of each other and looking out for each other. I get nervous about these kinds of projects where commercial entities are making money off of whatever. I want to go back to something you said, Mayor, Madam Mayor at the last meeting, about the average age in Bloomfield is the highest in the state. To get that average, you have to have people who are very old. To get people who are very old, they're on very fixed incomes because they either got social security or pensions way back 30 years ago or they were in low-income jobs. So those are folks that a $4 a month increase is going to impact. Some of us, it's not, but some folks, it is going to, so I want to put that out there. I also am very much concerned about bulk discounts. It's not the way to go in this, in this world. We have a lot of people on this planet that, you know, we really need to think about, and I know conserving water here isn't going to help California's wildfires. And I know when my mother said, you know, if you don't eat your lunch, it's going to go to China, it couldn't go to China. You know, the kids in China were going to not get my lunch. But we do need to have kind of a mentality of looking out for the planet itself, not just each other. So I am very much in favor of, I think Barbara's idea was brilliant about, you know, tax and increase the price on over 600,000 or over 500,000 or over 300,000. Who needs that much water? Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Jane Lo, 20 Prespic Street. I want to know what you don't understand about the word "no." We've already said no. And the fact that you could come back and propose this kind of discount again, two years later, makes no more sense today than it did when it was originally proposed and then you rescinded it. So the answer is no. I have to pay more when I use more. Why doesn't any other group have to do that? There's no reason why Niagara, which is taking our water at a discount and selling it at a profit somewhere else. It makes no sense. No, I hope you understand that.
So, one counselor that did not get a chance to speak would like to say something. I'm going to let Counselor Waterhouse say what she would like to say. Hi, as a, two of them, please. As a resident of Woodland Ave, our road has been shut down for quite a while recently because they're doing repairs at the other end. And from what I understand, they outsource all that work to construction companies. And from what I understand, they outsource all that work to construction companies. I'm under the impression it's going to take about three months to repair the infrastructure that needs to be repaired. However, every day we go by, they repave over everything. Not great work, but you know, it's repaved. If you have a truck, it's great. But today and other days, they have water pumps that are just spewing huge amounts of water into the road and in, you know, going right down the sewer drains. I'd like to know what the contamination rate of that is and where it's coming from, you know, because clearly you're all going to get billed for it. But I just wanted to put that out there. Also, the construction companies, I am aware because I take walks with my dogs and my kids, and we talk, they have cut wrong lines. They have had citizens have gone without water for, I don't know, days or a couple of hours or whatnot. Unacceptable, since that's not supposed to be happening at all. How do you cut the wrong line? I just wanted to speak up as a citizen from Woodland Ave., a little bit passionate about it as well. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who came out, and I really, really, really hope that the MDC has heard Jane left. So thank you all for coming out. Thank you for speaking. At this time, we're going to go into report from, oh, if every, we need to take a quick two-minute break, so if those that need to leave can leave. Excuse me. Get the guy from MDC for me. Hi, sorry, can I have your card, please? And I really do hope that you guys, I'm not sure where the discounts are coming from, but I, if you guys, right, but if you guys are really thinking about giving discounts to a company that's actually making money and not giving discounts to the residents of this town, I can promise you, there's going to be an outcry, just like it was in two thousand sixteen. I think we all need to understand where the residents are with this. When you're talking about increasing another bill, it's difficult, and then you're going to turn around and give a discount to a company that's making money.
Public reception.
This, I promise you, this entire town will be in an uproar like never before. And what I'm asking, what I'm imploring you to do is just to take into consideration this meeting. If you're going to give discount, give discounts to our seniors, give discounts to people who are, who don't have the means to pay these bills. Here, we're not just looking at our individual bill, because my individual water bill is an issue for me, but I'm looking at the town. People are saying that our taxes are too high. Now you're going to add this on top. They won't want to live here. They won't want to live here. And believe it or not, Niagara cannot sustain the town of Bloomfield. This right here was a microcosm of the water people. And I can tell you that most of us are sitting here because all of these people, thousands of these people came out and said, "Oh, y'all got to go because of what you all did." I'm trying to alleviate the firestorm that's coming.
Because they're going to think it's us.
And I'm going to be the first one to say, "No, it's not."
You guys had a pilot program.
So we're going to start with our, we're going to start with our subcommittee reports. Community Service, Deputy Mayor, Community Service and Admin Education, Deputy Mayor Curtin.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Admin Education, one second. I'll start with Admin Education Subcommittee. We met on November fifth at six-thirty. We started with the monthly reports. Received the monthly reports from the Human Service Facility. The project remains on target for completion by August two thousand nineteen. The Subcommittee requested a breakdown of owner requests, change orders, approvals, and credit backs. The Subcommittee also agreed to include a ten-thousand-dollar threshold for the report on a monthly basis. In addition, the Subcommittee also requested more detailed expanded narrative of the projects to the present and next month, at next month's meeting. Next item was the Public Works Facility. Ms. Nancy Hayes, who's a RIS and Purchasing Manager, gave a brief presentation on the status of the project. The Town Council approved the GMP figures to proceed with the project. The construction contract with PDS Construction has executed, and crews have mobilized to begin work recently. The groundbreaking ceremony was held last Thursday, November eighth. On to the Zone Enforcement Progress Report. Received a report from Mike Casella on the Zone Enforcement Office presented a brief outline of the month of October, action and violations. Mr. Casella noted that the Department has met with the Health District on two occasions to discuss concerns relating to housing light ordinance. In addition, the Department is developing a plan to address issues related to enforcement appeals due to the process with compliance. On the old business, we took up item eighteen-seven-six, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Bloomfield Small Local Business Enterprise Program Status Update by Jose Guiner. Mr. Guiner gave a brief status update regarding the Bloomfield Small Local Business Enterprise Program. The local purchasing preference is a policy that provided a defined level of preference towards any contract of local businesses. The preference would also apply under a vendor selection process. Based on town staff, town staff didn't know that a creation of this program would suppress a competition from procurement issues. In addition, staff recommended to this Subcommittee a full review of research materials provided based on the pros and cons if we went ahead with this process. Item sixteen-twelve, Consider and Take Action Regarding Farmington River Park, which is the four-seventy, four-sixty Tungus Avenue Status Update. Mr. Molesko of the Leisure Service and Ms. Stephanie White give a, from Fierce O'Neill, give a brief overview of the status update for the Farmington River Park. Ms. White presented a fine recommendation of the Farmington River Master Plan in addition to ensure whether discussion regarding the existing house that's currently on the property, whether or not we should take it down, or we should kind of remodel it to fit within the current construction of the park. So there's debates that's going on right now concerning to that, and we're going to get an update in the next meeting in December, in December. Another item that we discuss is Council, a Council for item nineteen-oh-six, Discuss and Possible Action Regarding Improvements to the Town Council Chambers. I'm happy to say for everyone that's looking at home, by December, you'll get better feed, you'll be able to see the, whatever presentation that's being showed here in the Council Chambers, you'll be able to see it at home. Each one of us will have stationary mics at our daisies, so we wouldn't have to kind of share the saliva from the current mics that we're currently using. Mr. Law presented a brief estimate of the Council Chamber improvements. I think currently, right now, there's an estimate of twenty-five thousand dollars for the improvement to Council Chambers. I believe that's important for us to be able to present whatever we're doing here to the viewers at home and the ones, and everyone that's sitting here in the Council Chambers. So we did went ahead, I think, the couple items that will be noticeable is the microphone, the gooseneck microphone that you see when you're looking at, you know, the DC, and they have all that mic here, will have that. The lighting will also be improved, the TV monitor, I think on this side here would have that, and then we have power supply outlets at each station here. And I think there's going to be some upgrade with the feed from BATV with the cable and so the high-intention cables that will go ahead and help us to be able to present in a better, in a better manner. Next item on the agenda is eighteen-sixty-four, Consider and Take Action Regarding Taxation on Churches and School and Charitable Organization. This item was referred to our town attorney for further discussion because currently right now, the state law, we don't tax churches. I know my colleague Councilman Mayor brought it up, and he wanted us to do something here to say that we, as a council, do not tax churches, and I think we're currently discussing with our town attorney whether or not we need to do anything to follow through what's currently a state law. Next item nineteen-twenty-five, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Tobacco Twenty-One here in Bloomfield. What this is, we're currently discussing whether or not to raise the age of the ability to purchase tobacco from eighteen to twenty-one. I know there's a couple of states around the country has made this move. Currently, close to us, Hartford, have put an ordinance in place to raise the age from eighteen to twenty-one. Bloomfield is currently considering whether or not we're able to do that here in the town. Tonight, I think there's a resolution on the council agenda to send a message to our state legislators which, to say that Bloomfield do support this new ordinance to go ahead and raise the age. So we're going to debate this in committee on working with the Health District to see whether or not this is something that Bloomfield can do locally here to create an ordinance. There's costs, there's a lot of overhead costs associated with that, so we're working hard to make sure that we do everything possible to safeguard our youth and to have further discussions on both sides of the spectrum. And that's my final report, Madam Mayor.
Finance, Councilor Glass.
Finance will be very quick. We have not met since our last Finance Committee meeting, and I think at the last Town Council, I gave a summary of that. We will be meeting again next Monday at six-thirty on November, Monday, November nineteenth. A lot of update items on the agenda. Probably the biggest item that we will start initiating is a discussion of how we will do some of, you know, looking at some pre-funding of various expenses going forward, although we have to develop some policies on that. So if you are interested in what's going on with Bloomfield's finances, please come out next Monday at six-thirty. Council, yeah, number five.
Public Safety, Councilor McSary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met this afternoon prior to this meeting. We got a few updates from the Police Department. Crime is up about five percent this time compared to last year. That's just because we had a few auto break-ins. Just be mindful that as the weather starts to get chilly and cold, that you don't pre- heat your car and leave the key in the car. Just make sure you get an automatic car starter or lock the door, just, or sit in your car until it warms up. Just be very, very careful of that. The Police Department is fully staffed for the first time in a long time, which is very, very good. We budget forty-nine officers, and we currently have forty-nine. We have two recruits that is doing very well in the academy. We also appointed or hired a new officer with twenty years of experience from Weathersfield, previously coming from Weathersfield in Hartford, so that's very good. As far as the Fire Department, the Center Chief was absent this afternoon due to some other commitments. The Blue Hills Fire Chief gave a very detailed report. Everything is copasthetic there. As far as the communication system, our consultant has passed away, and so his firm has to replace his position. And over the next couple of weeks, that firm will be in touch with the town manager and the police chief to discuss options. The police chief mentioned this afternoon that he went to the Police Chief Association meeting, and there's been some discussion of the state opening up their communication systems to the local municipalities, which will save us tons of money. That's a good thing. So we look forward to hearing from the police chief and the consultant regarding that. Madam Mayor, that concludes my, oh, sorry, one more thing. EMS, we are in desperate need of volunteers for BVA. We are one of the only towns left with a volunteer EMT program, so if you're, if you are at home and you know of someone who's interested in volunteering, please, please contact the Bloomfield Police Department. Sergeant White, who oversees the BVA program, we are in desperate need of volunteers. So we applaud you, we encourage you to please volunteer with your local program. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Committee on Committee and Land Use and Economic Development, Councilor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Committee on Committees hasn't met since last October fifteenth, which was a regularly scheduled meeting. Our next meeting was scheduled for Monday, November nineteenth, but it had to be canceled because there wasn't any referrals, because we've basically filled the vacancies. So we'll have some more report, I believe, in December. The Land Use and Economic Development Committee also met on October eighteenth, and there were no regular scheduled meetings since then. So we did report back to the council on, our council meeting on October twenty-second. So there's nothing new to report on that committee either. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be November the twentieth.
Thank you very much.
It's next Tuesday.
Old Council Business, eighteen-nineteen-twenty-five, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Tobacco Twenty-One Bloomfield Resolution.
I guess, Madam Mayor, I can provide some explanation. First, the council's direction, we have created a draft resolution that is to be sent to our state legislative delegation. However- However, that needs to go back to the Administration and Education Subcommittee for review and recommendation back to the town. Council, if they find the resolution is acceptable.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
I don't think it's made, no.
I'm sorry. So Elizabeth moved it. Councilor Merritt, second it. Any discussions? Councilor McLeary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate this, this effort in signing a resolution. But like our local experts say, sending a resolution to the state legislation or delegation is worth just as much as the paper it's on. So I would like for us to spend our time in correcting the ordinance, working as I wanted to do from the very beginning, having a robust conversation with the Bloomfield, the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District, the police department, the town attorney. My original motion from the previous meeting was to have a joint meeting, to have the discussion to make sure that this policy was what we needed and we decided to go do other things. So again, I just wish that we would just focus on the issues that the executive director from the Health District mentioned in committee, that he doesn't have the ability to do the enforcement. Let's work with the police department and let's work with the town attorney to figure out with him and the experts what works so we could do this. Over the last couple of weeks, there was an article in the New York Times that the FDA has decided to ban the sale of fruit-like or flavored-like cartridges for vaping because there's going to increase in vaping. This issue is systemic all across America. And as we know, the tobacco industry would do whatever they could do to appeal to our youth, our children. I went back a couple of weeks ago, to be transparent, I work at a healthcare institute, institution, and I spoke with a doctor. And what they're seeing now is that the vaping products, because of its chemicals and stuff, it's causing fungus up under the lungs. And they're catching it at a very late stage. So, Madam Mayor, I would urge us not to waste time in committee on the resolution and let's focus on the ordinance and let's, you know, it's a good step, it's a good step. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not a good step, it's a good step, but I would like to see us focus heavily on the ordinance.
So with all due respect, Councilor McLeary, in committee, it was voted on, I believe, unanimously that we would do the ordinance and the resolution.
Yes.
So I don't believe that we're losing anything, I do believe that we're doing both. And I do believe that the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District is working while we're going through the ordinance process, they are already working, the resolution process, they're already working on the ordinance process. I think the important thing to remember is that the entire council agrees with the idea of raising the age to purchase tobacco to twenty-one. I think what we're wanting to be mindful of is the way that we set something up that's going to work for Bloomfield, whether it's going to be for our enforcement agencies, whether it's going to be for the Health District or the police department, or even the forty entities that sells tobacco products here in Bloomfield. So we're not doing one or the other, we are doing both. This resolution, I think it was a little bit easier to work up for the resolution. I think the ordinance is going to take a little bit more time and I believe that the Health District is doing due diligence. One of the things that the experts said when we had our meeting in Admin and Education was it took Hartford about four, five months to get this done and that we kind of put the cart before the horse where we weren't having these discussions. So now that the discussion has started, we thank you for being a part of that discussion. I think we've gotten the ordinance into the right hands for them to help to craft it. But the resolution, which also came from our town attorney with the help of the Health District, is a part of the step. So we're working together to get it done. So I don't think it's either or, it's both. Council, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add and I just wanted to just let my colleague know that Hartford, it took them six months to kind of vet this whole process. And I think it's proven that Bloomfield does the same thing because there is cost involved. In addition to that, we do share a health district with West Hartford. When you compare Hartford, Hartford has a health department. So Bloomfield, whatever this cost may be, has to be split between two towns. So part of the conversation is to sit down with our colleagues in West Hartford and to see where they are with this so we can work together to collaborate, to come up with an ordinance that will work. Because part of the problem with this, and each individual town's passing an ordinance like this, if Bloomfield does and Windsor and our surrounding town, including West Hartford, these same kids that we're trying to prevent from smoking will be able to go cross town lines and purchase cigarettes. So I think we have to be thoughtful in this process. Listen, this didn't start yesterday, you know, this is a problem that's been around for a long time. I do agree that we should take smoking out of our young kids' hands and we all agree that. But I think in order for us to be effective, we got to be thoughtful and we have to put something in place that will be able to have feed. So I think we are making those steps and I think we're going to collaborate to make sure we have something that will work for Bloomfield and to make sure we have the resources in place to enforce whatever ordinance is in place. Because as you know, we currently have ordinance in place that we can't even enforce.
And, Councilor Merritt?
Yes, I thank you, Madam Mayor. Glad to hear your words that we are going to do both and I think it's important that we go ahead with both. And I don't see why we can't take care of this resolution tonight, but, and it will take a little time to do the ordinance, but I think, I think we are a town that's not afraid to go ahead with something like that. I can't see the cost being all that great. All we're doing is raising the age from eighteen to twenty-one and I think that we were told that hundreds and hundreds of towns have already done similar ordinances and the cancer people and all the other health people that came and talked to us gave us ample, will give us more support. They said this is really not a problem and nor is enforcement, neither enforcement nor the fact that, and the problem is that states won't pass this until the towns go ahead. States are very reluctant to deal with it. Massachusetts wouldn't pass it until many, many towns embarrass them into doing it. So it saves lives and it's just, nobody disagrees with it, it's just, why shouldn't we go ahead? And I think somebody's got to be first and we're not first, but we'll be among the leaders. I think it's a good thing that we do that.
Call a question on the resolution, Madam Mayor?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Wait, point of clarification? So is this a resolution to send to AME?
Well, that was the only motion that we had on the floor.
To send it to AME?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Eighteen nineteen dash twenty-eight, consider and take action regarding approval of council schedule for two thousand nineteen?
I don't know.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It seems to me every year we get into a situation where we, like tonight, end up having to schedule special meetings for holidays. It looks like that's been foreseen in this, I hope it has, so that we don't have to go and move, move Saturday meetings to Tuesdays. Has that been taken, have you been through it? It looks like you have.
December twenty-third, we need to amend it because it's not correct the way that it's been amended based on the schedule I sent out.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I move that we adopt the amended schedule that our assistant town manager Sharon Howes sent out earlier.
Well, you will need to, your meeting on next April, you will need to decide when you want to have the meeting. That was decided.
Right. And I, the motion, we tabled this for our next meeting.
Oh my goodness, there's so many, there's so many motions right now, I don't even know where to go with this.
Well, she moved to table it to the next meeting.
You're ready to table it?
Yeah, for discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Or writing? Eighteen nineteen dash thirty, consider and take action regarding cancellation of December twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen town council meeting.
So moves.
Any discussions?
Nope.
I think we should have that meeting right before Christmas.
Nope, I'll be out of town. I have December twenty-second to January first of, I will be on vacation.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Did I skip eighteen nineteen dash twenty-nine? Sorry, eighteen nineteen dash twenty-nine, consider and take action regarding adoption of council subcommittee meeting schedule for-
Motion to move?
No, table, right? Motion to table.
The subcommittees as well?
The tapes, it doesn't match.
Second?
Aye.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Eighteen nineteen dash thirty-one, consider and take action regarding tax refunds.
Madam Mayor, I will move that we had, we approved the tax refunds with one adjustment, this is just a typo. The first adjust, the first adjustment for a hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents that is allocated to Toyota's least trust be changed to Toyota least trust with the others. With that one correction, I would move that we approve.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Eighteen nineteen dash thirty-two, consider and take action regarding Winston Berry Hills golf course renewal agreement.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would, I would move the acceptance of this and I would say that it's, all we're doing here really is extending the present group running our, managing our golf course while we go through the process of a new search. And so it's basically, and holding the dollars and everything level. So it's just giving us time to do a proper search.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question.
So no tax, no, no fee increase, it's zero, it remains flat?
Yeah, everything's flat.
All right. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Eighteen nineteen dash thirty-three, consider and take action regarding a resolution on opposing volume discounts by the Metropolitan District Commission, MDC, and support conservation pricing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move adoption of this resolution based on all the support of our community that came out tonight as well as what we have been dealing with for the last couple of years. This resolution opposes the volume discounts for large volume users and attempts to create, or at least points attention to the need for more conservation pricing and other solutions. The problem and the intent is to have the, our MDC representative vote against this when it comes up in, at MDC.
Second.
Is there any discussions? Councilor McLeary?
So we're not sending this to committee, we're sending the T twenty-one resolution to committee. I asked a point in question tonight regarding whether they were going to give the discount and they gave me rough. So is it possible for us to send this to a committee to have a discussion with the MDC and our MDC commissioners to ask certain questions to ensure that these rates, they're going to give these, because I don't know if they're going to give the rates or not. You know, asked the question of the representatives tonight and they didn't. So could we send this to committee and have further discussion with the MDC? I think it would be a perfect opportunity for us to, not summons, but request of our MDC district representatives to come. It's not an amendment, I just open, I'm just open for discussion regarding this, but because we are sending T twenty-one back to subcommittee, but we're not sending this there.
Yes, Council, that's a, that's a good, good point. The difficulty here is the timing of the MDC's scheduled approval of the budget, which was presented to us tonight as being the end of this month. And getting a council, a meeting back of the committee and back to council again poses a more of a time problem than setting up our subcommittee meeting dates. So I'm concerned about that and unless there's a real issue of why we shouldn't do this, I'd like to pass it. Because having a discussion with MDC over this, I'm not sure it was going to have as much of a learning process as we might if we had a discussion with West Hartford, Bloomfield Health District about how to prepare a good ordinance that will, that will be sufficient. So I think it's a little bit different, this is a statement of where we, what we believe and what we feel rather than putting anything in motion that's going to change, change the character necessarily or put the town in an enforcement mode of any sort. Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilor Merritt?
I, I think we ought to go ahead with this. I'm not, but I just, I think, I think, I think they expect us to, you know, say they didn't stick around. I, I think that's expected. I think if you wanted to do something, we ought to be contacting other towns to see if they're, they're doing the same thing. Because if you get West Hartford and a few other towns doing the same thing we're doing, that means there would be no questions, wouldn't happen. I suspect they're not going to do it anyway, they're just using us as an excuse to tell Niagara that they're not going to do it. But anyway, I think if we try to have some time, that would be great to call other towns.
Councilor Glass?
Madam Mayor, I just want to respond to Council Mayor, Councilor Mayor to let him know that we actually are in, you know, have, have talked to councilors in Windsor, talking to them, and in particular in West Hartford where the deputy, we've spoken with the deputy mayor and they were very interested in getting a copy of our resolution, et cetera. So I think, I think you bring up a very good point and I think that's something that is, I think that's something that unfortunately and is starting to change. One of the ways the MDC has held its power and its control for so long is by atomizing and separating the different towns. And I think there is a lot of strength and solidarity, you know, strength and union of those towns and you're exactly right, we need to do more talking and more communicating with those towns.
Any, Councilor McLeary?
So I just, I'm not against this, this resolution, but I asked a question again tonight in my question of the MDC, whether the, if these discounts was reflected in the budget and it wasn't reflected in the budget and then I inquired with them about if they was to change the, or change their financing and go to their subcommittee for an update, would we be notified? I do, it's uncertain, so I would like to get more clarification on it. But if the distinguished counselor is telling me that it's a time restriction, I will trust his word and I move the, I call the, I move the adoption.
All in favor?
It was already moved, this was discussed.
Oh, okay, well, all the questions, sorry, all the questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Eighteen nineteen dash thirty-four, consider and take action regarding tax abatement for total wall systems.
Madam Mayor, I move that we refer this item to the Finance Subcommittee for further review and recommendation and that will be on, we already knew this, it will be on the agenda for next week's finance.
Second.
Any discussions?
I don't know, I'm in favor of building that wall. Is that a good Republican move right now?
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Vote to reconsider.
It's not in the budget.
Can we have our report from our town manager?
Yes, there are several items that the council approved in the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget and I wanted to let everybody know those are moving along. One of them is a shared services study. This is being managed pretty much by our Director of Finance, Kerry Rowley. We have solicited proposals from consulting firms to look at the potential consolidation with the Board of Education of our finance systems, our information technology operations, certain aspects of human resources, and also facilities maintenance. Interviews have been held this past week with the firms that had submitted proposals and we'll be moving ahead with that in the coming weeks. Similarly, in the sense of studies, we also have a reorganization study that the town council had funded in the FY eighteen nineteen budget to look at town staffing, look at town operations in terms of staffing levels and see if there might be opportu- at, uh, town operations in terms of staffing levels, and see if there might be opportunities to reorganize various departments and divisions of, of the town in, in order to better serve some of the needs that the council wants to look at. That study has been funded, uh, again, uh, proposals have been received, uh, by the town, and, uh, interviews have started with the, uh, with the firms that, that are going to be interviewed, and we'll be, uh, moving ahead with that in, in the coming weeks and months. The only other thing I'd like to bring up is that I have provided to the council at your request, a list of deferred library maintenance items, as well as, uh, ongoing, uh, maintenance, uh, issues with the Prosser Library. You may remember that, uh, the Chair of the Library Board, Joan Geter, was in several, uh, meetings ago with a list of, of, uh, different things that had occurred at the McMahon Branch Library, and you'd asked at that time for a list, uh, for the Prosser Library, the main library, and, uh, that was forwarded to you, uh, earlier this week. And that completes my report.
Thank you. So, um, a lot of things are going on. We just, uh, had our third town hall meeting on last Thursday. We had it at the... 330 Park. We had it at 330 Park, um, and it was a very informative meeting. I'd like to say thank you to all the residents that came out. We had a good turnout, there was a lot of, uh, good questions asked and some updates made. This past Saturday, we had a special town hall meeting just for the residents of Seaberry, and we had over fifty residents, um, in attendance, and it was a wonderful meeting, um, at Seaberry, and they stayed the entire time. Um, so we thank, um, Seaberry for that. We are in the, uh, search for a town manager, and we're in the process of interviewing the executive search firms. There was an RFP that went out. We received, um, I think five, uh, responses to the RFP, and we have started the, um, process of interviewing the executive search firm. We will, uh, narrow it down, they will come before the council, and the council will make a decision on which search firm we use, uh, to look for a new town manager. Um, the great thing is that Phil is going to be a part of that process. He is not leaving us. Also, for those who are a little bit concerned, I have no desire to be the town manager. I have no experience, and I don't think the deputy mayor wants to be the town manager either. Those are some things that we're hearing, so please, please do not faint or be of troubled heart. This is a decision that the town council has to make. Um, we also are doing interviews, I think, on this Thursday for our town attorney. We're going through the process, so that is also moving. I know that there were some concerns about that. Um, I want to say a congratulations to, um, Pat Davis, who is an amazing, um, Bloomfield resident, and I want to get it correct. Um, Pat Davis, she's the co-chair of ABC, and she will be a recipient of the 2018 Parental Involvement Recognition Award, so if you see her, please just say congratulations. Um, I think I'll leave the rest of it to... Yep. Um, at this time, can I have an approval for our minutes of October 22nd?
So moved.
Any discussions? Any corrections?
Okay.
Council on Golf?
And that's what I was, I was waiting. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Um, approval of minutes of our November 3rd Town Council Retreat?
So moved.
Second. Any discussions? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So moved. Um, council comments, I will start with...
I asked for you to start with me first, finally, because I have a, a deadline. Uh, Shani has to go to work in five minutes, and I gotta get home to the girl, so if you would grant my...
Council McQuary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I mean, how do I say no?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I do have to get home, uh, very soon, so I won't be in executive session, um, as I am an active dad, sure as some other young parents up here on the, on the dices. Um, but, um, very brief, uh, T-21, um, there were some comments about, um, a lot of cost involved. Um, the cost is self-funded through the fees that will be collected for the license, um, so it won't be, um, it won't be a burden on, uh, the taxpayers or other towns, other towns will not have to pay for it. Uh, it's a policy that, uh, funds itself. Um, there were some issues around the enforcement of the program, um, so I just want to make that clear, that it is not true that, um, other towns will have to pick up the cost for a policy that we implement. Secondly, I want to mention that, uh, we got an email from the Director of Senior Services that, uh, there will be a turkey giveaway this Thursday, I think it's at 10:00 AM, 9:30, 10:00 AM at the 330 Park, so if you need a turkey for the holiday, you can go there. It was donated by a Bloomfield alum, who's now in the NFL, um, so thank you to him and his wife for giving back to the community that gave so much to him and his family. Uh, I want to congratulate Pat Davis, um, on her award, um, and finally, um, I just want to, uh, mention about being continents of, um, working professionals over the last couple of, um, weeks, there have been, you know, events happening at two and three o'clock in the day, uh, some counselors are working professionals, um, and so if you don't see us at these events, it's not that, um, we don't want to show up, or we're not being engaged, it's just the fact that we are working and it's hard for us to, uh, take off of work. I am still hopeful, uh, that this council could come together and be one. Um, we ran on being together, and so I hope moving forward that, uh, we can continue to be inclusive. I know there were some, uh, comments made about not attend, at the last previous meeting that I had to leave, um, about not attending caucuses, um, on Sundays. Um, I will be transparent, I am not going to attend the caucuses, um, as, um, decisions are already made, um, and it is just a, uh, a good gesture, uh, to have Counselor Marshall Neely and myself show up so they can, or whoever attends the council, uh, the caucus, to just tell us what they agreed on. Um, over the last past couple of weeks, I have, um, introduced, um, some good public policy, um, and because politics is getting away, um, those public policy things are either died or being delayed. Um, just because one introduced public policy, the policy in its, in its early stages is not going to be a perfect policy by any means. It is just a way to start conversation, to get things moving. Um, and I've witnessed, um, politics getting away because of who introduced the public policy, or who, who's gonna get the credit for it. And I would just hope that, um, we put that to the side and just really start to have, um, conversations. Um, I will not attend the caucus. I know it sounds contradictory that, oh, he's saying that he wants to have conversation, but he's not attending the caucus, because in people's minds, they already made up what they're gonna, they're not going to support, um, the piece of public policy because it came from either myself or, uh, Counselor Marshall Neely. Um, so with that, I'm hopeful that Rule B could get back to what Rule B said they will, what we would do, um, as, as we continued to last year. Thank you, and that concludes my comments.
I'm gonna ask you not to leave, um, Council McQuary, cause you did put a, just, you just put a whole heap of stuff out there, um, that I think was a little, um... That was the word that was coming to my mind, too, just disingenuous, but I just wanted to use harsh, cause I think it was a little bit harsh. So, to say that we have caucuses, anyone can tell you, and our caucuses are noticed, we have them every Sunday before council meeting at Dunkin' Donuts on Blue Hills Avenue across from Cumberland Farms. It's very public, it's very open, we do have some very heated discussions, because we always don't see eye to eye. But we've gone to our second, um, council retreat, and the gentleman that leads the retreat has an amazing viewpoint. Disagree, but commit. Meaning that you may not agree on everything, but commit to doing what's in the best interest of the town. And if you come to the table with that frame of mind, you will come to caucuses. You will discuss what your thoughts are, you will discuss how you feel about any agenda items, you will put out any idea that you have, that's what we have to do, we have to disagree, but we have to commit. And for you to say that you're not coming to a caucus because our minds are already made up is making huge assumptions, huge. And I can tell you, we just had a fight at Dunkin' Donuts on Blue Hills Avenue a couple of Sundays ago, because we were fighting over the turf for the high school, and everyone in Dunkin' Donuts knew that we did not agree. But when it was finished, we committed to doing what's in the best interest of our town. We've been on council now for a year and change. We've had at least twenty-plus caucuses. You can't tell me that you don't want to come and have conversations to do what's in the best interest of the town. You can't tell me that we have a council retreat and you come late and leave early because you want to do what's in the best interest of the town. This is not the forum for us to air our disagreements. That forum is in a caucus. That forum is in a meeting, whether it's one-on-one, whether it's two-on-two, however it, it needs to be, that's what it needs to be, so that we can do what's in the best interest of the town. Now, once again, Council McQuary, I thought that your, your, your statements were very disingenuous. T-21, we thought it was a great idea. No one on this day has said it's a dumb idea, we don't want to do it, not because of who introduced it, no one said that. We all agreed, and even before we met, I spoke to the mayor of Hartford, I spoke to council persons in Hartford, they told me the process that they had to go through. The wording that we received for the ordinance did not fit Bloomfield. We didn't tear it down, we didn't turn it down. What we did was we had the, the Health District come in, make a presentation, and we said to them, okay, let us know how this can work for our town. I would like for you and anyone else who might be misconstrued to just stop it, and stop saying, let's work together and actually do it, work together. Now, if we're having, I'm, I work. I don't know if anybody believes that, but you can ask my boss, he was here. I work. So I don't think anyone's bashing anyone else if they can't make a meeting or anything like that. We don't go up and do that. The benefit of the doubt, think the best in people. Think the fact that we're all here, we all sitting here, it's 10:35 at night, and we're all sitting here because we all want Bloomfield to be the best Bloomfield possible, and we're all trying to make a difference, all of us. And that's the lens that I look at each and every one of my counselors. Another thing that came up at the council retreat, which I thought was amazing, was the person that was leading the retreat said, I can't even tell who's Republican or Democrat, because it really doesn't matter, it's about what's in the best interest of the town. And that's the lens we have to look through, because if we're starting to pick out what we want to pick out, you will always find what you want to find. So I'm asking you, please, let's try to work together, and let's try, let's, let's stop throwing shade. Now, I will use that as my council comment, I won't say nothing else. Council Waterhouse, council council.
I don't know what's coming after that.
I don't know.
This, uh, a few days ago, I went to CBS, and I had been seeing our, um, local football players, you know, scattered throughout the town, they're doing a, um, a Support and Save discount card, twenty dollars, and you get, um, admission into all of their games, and you get discounts off of, um, businesses in, in Bloomfield, as well as around, Carbones being one of them. Um, so I, I urge fellow Bloomfieldees to, you know, support our, our football team, and have a thi- happy Thanksgiving. Eat a lot of turkey.
Council Mayor?
I think, I care so much about getting the Democrats to work together, I'm gonna come to the next caucus. We'll be there. And, uh, and, and I, I actually, many a joke is that, I, I, we really do care about you working together, believe it or not. We, we, we need certain level of civility and harmony and mutual support to, to make this work, and, uh, I, I always, sometimes I feel guilty because we're supposed to be the adversaries, and we're supposed to provide alternatives, and, 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 and we're all together too cooperative, and we, we can't keep going on doing that, but there's been so much lack of cooperation within the Democratic group that we have, we, we're just kind of on the sideline. My, my old role as an adversary has been taken away from me, anyway. I'm feeling very insufficient, so, but we'll, we'll straighten that out your next caucus.
Thank you. Council Golf?
Yeah, I, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I have three comments, I, I will make a fourth at this point, but, um, I, I, first of all, I want to thank the community, uh, because, um, we've been saying at this, at the, this podium, uh, for a number of weeks before the election, uh, it is your civic duty to vote, uh, it's important that people are engaged and they vote, and I just wanted to report to folks that the, um, the voting percentage in Bloomfield was 71.1%, which is high, I think the state average of, I believe, was 66, uh, so we were above the state average. Didn't do quite as well as our friends over in West Hartford, but we did quite well, and I think it's important, uh, you know, I think that it's important for the community to be engaged, and, um, this is, th- this is a great result. Um, I do want to say two things about the MDC, um, presentation and, um, uh, one thing that's very important that we, we just didn't have time to get to, and I understand that completely, because there was a long presentation, and then lots of questions, and then public comments. Um, one of the things we saw on the screen, or one in the presentation was on page 25. Uh, this is their discussion of the integrated plan versus the current way of doing business, um, and they are now putting together the combination of the cost for the Ad Valorem and the, um, what used to be called the Special Sewer Service Charge, currently called Clean Water Project Charge, I think they're gonna change it back to the Special Sewer Service Charge. Uh, the Ad Valorem is paid by the town, you know, through our taxes, the, um, the, um, Special Sewer Service Charge is paid by, you know, individual customers who have both MDC water and sewer. One thing that is, that I believe is misleading about this is, uh, is that it puts all users on sort of the same basis, and that is not the case. The Ad Valorem is split on every, is split across everyone who pays taxes in the town of Bloomfield. That includes folks like myself who have MDC water but do not have MDC sewer, therefore do not pay the Special Sewer Service Charge. The Special Sewer Service Charge is only paid by the people who have both MDC water and sewer. So even though this, you know, even though theoretic, well, even though these may be slightly less charges, there is also a shifting of costs here. There's a shifting of costs through the Special Sewer Service Charge, you know, costs away from the town, which is great for town relief and, and looking at our municipal budget, but there is a shift toward the people who pay the Special Sewer Service Charge. Now, that is not universal in Bloomfield, in fact, I, I think we've had a little bit of trouble determining exactly who has sewer service and who doesn't, but we know how the sewer is spread out, we know that the majority of that is in the south, you know, in the southern part of the, of the town, especially the south, uh, uh, the southeastern part of the town. So, a couple of comments were made by my colleague, Councilor McQuary, by the mayor, about the MDC's charges, um, being moved to those who can least afford them, people on fixed incomes, people of, of low, lower economic means in some cases. Um, this scheme would do that. Um, you know, perhaps indirectly, and it's certainly a relief for the towns, but this would do that. So I think that needs to be taken into any consideration in terms of the integrated plan. The other comment I would like to make about the MDC is, um, in terms of talking about their, um, the, the, the cost of benefits to employees, um, and Councilor DeLorenzo and I were talking about this earlier with, with one of the folks from the MDC, um, there may be, there, there may be some problems in terms of, uh, the assumption that folks working out on the, um, on the roads and so forth, um, can't spend time saving, you know, saving money, and they need a DB plan for that. I'm not sure I buy that argument, but what, but what, but what I do buy is the fact that people at, you know... But what, but what I do buy is the fact that people at, you know, people working on the lines may need more of a social, you know, may need more of an economic safety net and they may need more of that piece of the three-legged stool because that's what pension plans are always supposed to be. You're supposed to have your pension plan, your DB plan, you're supposed to have your personal savings, and you're supposed to have the social security. Those three together are supposed to give you your long-term financial security in old age. What I really resent about the MDC and about a lot of corporate money-saving techniques is that the solution to this is to simply cap the level of salary that the DB plans cover. That would have virtually no effect on the workforce as described by the person making the financial presentation. He made the comment about people unable to save. Well, the people that can save, Mr. Jellison, for example, CEO, Mr. Jellison is in the DB plan, he could be removed. Mr. Jellison has no cap on the amount of saving, his salary that goes into the DB plan. And Mr. Jellison, unlike the rest of the employees in the MDC, gets two years of service for every actual year of working service. So the plan, the plan is stacked, folks, the game is rigged. If they really want to do savings, what they need to do is they need to make cuts at the top. And that's where the expenses are high and that's what needs to be cut. Those were the three comments I was going to make, but I do want to make a comment about Councilor McCleary's remarks. And I will be very brief because I think the mayor said exactly what needs to be said. The caucuses we have are not predetermined outcomes. I can tell you, we all respect each other, we, we try to work together, well, we are working together, we want to work together for the best interest of the town, but we do not always agree on things. On some issues, I probably agree closer to what Councilor McCleary's point of view is, but the way you introduce issues and items and bring them to the council and get them through the development they need is you raise them, they go to committee, they get worked on, and we ultimately vote on it and hopefully we will get a good outcome. You don't bring them to the newspaper and start there. So I do urge, I urge everyone, except Councilor Merritt, to come to our caucuses. But I think it's imperative that all the Democrats do caucus, do discuss the issues in advance and that's the way you have communication. So thank you.
Councilor DeRizzo?
Wow, there is nothing left to say. I do, I do want to say I agree with a lot of Councilor Goff's comments about the MDC and unfortunately, I didn't have a lot of time prior to tonight to study what they presented beforehand. But one other comment I wanted to make that I didn't get to ask them is they talked about a lot of overtime. I wanted to know if that overtime is factored into the pension plan or if it's based off of just their base salaries. So I would be interested in knowing how they do that. But I do, I totally agree that removing spousal independence for medical and dental coverage, as Mr. Schenk said earlier, was a huge reduction by doing that and certainly time that they do something like that. So the other thing I would say about the defined benefit plan versus a 401, I mean, I totally agree, you know, everybody should know how to save and there should be an education component as part of their plan process, as part of their HR jobs. And, you know, if, if they did move to a 401 versus a pension, if that member didn't voluntarily put money into their 401 or whatever their plan is, you can automatically enroll them at a minimum amount so that they're automatically saving, it's company policy that they're automatically enrolled. So, you know, I don't necessarily buy all of that argument about, you know, just because I work in the trenches, doing heavy lifting and digging and so forth, that I don't know how to budget my money or save my money. So I would just add that. The last thing I'll say is happy Thanksgiving. I hope that everybody, everybody has a great Thanksgiving holiday with family and friends. We also have our Christmas tree lighting coming up, I don't think that was mentioned, on December the first. So weather permitting, I hope to be present because I've had to miss it for a couple of years, but do look forward to our annual tree lighting event. So, okay, well with that, oh, and last thing, I hope everybody noticed the work outside. Talk about the beautification committee, Mrs. Mann, and I hope everybody noticed out front how beautiful our walkways now look and the sidewalks around the circular drive around the town hall. So a lot of good work is done there and quickly, so I think it's a huge improvement over what we had. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Mann?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, tomorrow night, we're having another town hall meeting at Arlen Flats at 6 o'clock. For those of you who live at Arlen Flats, we're coming. And we want to get to meet you and find out what your needs are and get you to understand what's going on in town as much as possible also.
And they're on draft.
That's another reason we're going there. So I think, I think that our town hall meetings have been quite interesting and successful, at least in terms of engaging our residents, which is all we hope to accomplish. Comments about the election, thank you, Councilman Goff, for putting out those statistics. Having stood in the rain at some of the polls, I could say there were some problems that I really want us to take care of next year, some of which include teachers having a professional day and the entire parking lot was full of cars and it was hard to find a parking space at CAMHS, for example. And plenty of, plenty of polls ran out of the "I voted" stickers, which was, that's embarrassing because so many people were looking for them. And then the toughest part, and probably because the response was so high and people may never have voted before, they didn't know where to vote. We have all these voting places, one in a row all the way down Park Avenue, they don't know which school to be in, and we have to do a better job next time getting that word out. And finally, just to say a little bit about what's been discussed up here on the dais with regard to Councilor McCleary's comments. It takes, this is, this is an unusual occupation, if you will, it requires that you talk to each other, it requires that you negotiate with each other, you know, the old standard of way of looking at politics. And you can't be an outsider, you got to be, you got to want to get in on the discussion. So those, there are places for those discussions to occur. And it's been pointed out that lack of attendance does not help you get your point across, nor does it help everybody else feel as though you're on the same page or that you're working together. So it's difficult, he has a different, he has a difficult problem, but it's largely a problem that can be overcome, it's largely his own. He's a bright fellow. In fact, when he presented the T-21 proposals, everybody here felt it was a good idea, the fact that it was written in four pages and looked like it was ready to go, but when final further analysis indicated it had committed the best Hartford District, the Health District, to things they couldn't comply with, and nobody knew that. It takes time. When you get something on paper that looks finished, you have to go through it, you have to work it. That's what we have attorneys for. And if you're going to do something that's going to be useful, functional, and last for a long time and not put the community at risk, you can't pass it the first time you show it. So it takes a little more effort than to say, well, you never listened to me or I don't, you made a decision before I showed up. That wasn't the case. You didn't see anybody here oppose that. We work with it, we developed it, we make it so that it's going to be a work we will document. So I think there's a problem, but I think it's a problem that he and Councilman Marshall Neely, who we also mentioned, has to deal with. Their absence at caucuses is also mirrored by their absence at the subcommittee meetings. It's hard to work with you when you're not here. And I want to say, I want to bring us together in the spirit of Thanksgiving, if that's possible, wish you all happy Thanksgiving, and pass to my deputy, esteemed deputy.
Thank you, Councilor Mann. And I just want to briefly just expand a little bit on the process within committee on this proposed ordinance. I think there's a couple of things that you have to think of. Number one, before you pass any ordinance, you have to have a public hearing. I just want to put that out there. I think part of the process and looking into, because we've done a lot of, I've done a lot of research on smoking, I'm not a smoker, but I've done a lot of research because I believe it's important when something come up, you have to be versed on what's going on. And I think in addition to that, Hartford went through a six-month period, I mean, sorry, Hartford went through a six-month period in making sure they get it right in certain cases. So I think what we're doing here, right, we're working with the Health District, we're working with our town staff to make sure that we have an ordinance that could reflect Bloomfield and can be enforceable. Now, there's another side to the spectrum, there are a lot of folks that are coming out, we've received emails and stuff from folks saying, hey, I'm 18, I'm an 18-year-old, you know, I can go to war, I could, I could, I could have a mortgage, I could do this, I could do that, but you don't believe I could choose whether or not I want to smoke. So it's not as simple as just passing an ordinance without getting public input. So I believe the concept about saving lives and our young people getting cigarettes out in their hands, I think that's commendable. We do believe that, but I think we are elected, elected officials, policymakers, to make sure that we're thoughtful in doing anything, right, especially when it's an ordinance that will affect the entire town. There's town staff, there's time, there's commitment, you have to enforce these ordinance. I keep saying enforce, we have an enforcement problem right now with blight, okay? So anything we put in place, we have to be able to enforce it. So I just hope that Councilor McCleary would see what we're trying to say, it's, no one here is saying that we don't want to pass this, but I think we have to go through a process. In any job we do, there is a process to anything. So I think, I just hope that we all could respect the process and would work in with our town staff. In addition to that, I just wanted to also just thank everyone for continuously coming out. I think my colleagues are committed to this job. When I started out on this path, you know, I thought it was a couple hours here or there, but if you want to do it right, it's a commitment. And I enjoy doing it, I know my colleagues do the same, and I think we collaborate well, we have heated conversation on issues, but then we resolve, we compromise, and that's what it's about. It's about compromising for the betterment of the town. I think we continuously do that and I hope that more of my colleagues feel the need to come around because, you know, I've extended, extended myself to reach out to both of my colleagues to get them to come in to the circle for us to discuss things. You know, we're part of a process. I don't want to do things and, you know, my colleagues are not part of it. So I think it's important, I want to continue to encourage them to, to be a part of our caucuses because I think it's important for us to get town business done. And to my colleague to the right, Councilor Merritt, I don't think we can give you the invite to our meeting, so I think we'll defer.
It's an absolute open meeting, if you want to come, just bring some coffee and a pumpkin donut and come on. I am going to take the opportunity to say one more thing. We had a town vigil the other day, supporting our brothers and sisters, and we were able to also go to a couple synagogues that evening. It warmed my heart to see what Bloomfield looked like. I don't know if anyone here was there, the town green was filled with people of all different races, all different ethnicities, all different religious backgrounds in solidarity and support. That's what our town looks like. That's what our town is, that's why it's so great. So I'm going to ask that we leave the federal politics, the nastiness of politics, I'm going to ask that we leave it at the border. Bloomfield, we're not that kind of people, we don't do things like that. I'm also going to ask that we leave our families, our families are off limits. Each and every one of us who decided to run, we consulted our families, we consulted our whomever, we got permission, but we ran, we were elected. It's not fair that you start to disparage our families or tear down our families or make up rumors or innuendos that will hurt our families. And I'm saying it because I've heard stuff, right? And I think it's very unfair. We're a welcoming town, we're a respectful town, and we need to keep that as the fabric of who we are and not play nasty politics. There's a lot of nastiness happening in the world around us. Let's try to insulate ourselves here in Bloomfield. So we talked about the parade that's coming up, we've talked about Thanksgiving and everyone's going to eat a lot, including me. On the 17th, which is this Saturday, the Congregational Church, they'll be serving their Thanksgiving meal there. I'm going to ask the counselors if it's possible for you to join me over there so that we can help to serve the community on this Saturday, I believe it's between 12 and 1, I think. And after everyone has eaten turkey and apple pie and pumpkin pie, please remember Planet Fitness is opening in Bloomfield in the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza. We can, they have a special, $10 gets you a membership. So eat all you want, but plan after that. At this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss pending claims and litigations, also personnel matter, town manager's goals and objectives with the town manager, the assistant to the town manager, and the town attorney.
Motion to adjourn. The motion goes into executive session.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions, motions carries? Thank you also very much for staying with us.